This town council meeting at 7:03 PM on June 14, 2022. Everyone, please rise for the bunch of allegiance of all that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of America. We are in a valid or we just change one nation on your own. We have no proclamations and presentations under other four. And so that will then bring a topic by five, which is public decisions, communication and public participation on any subject of the Jersey County Council with a two-minute limits. If you're in the public, you can approach the people, but if you're on Zoom, you can hit star nine or hit the raise hand function. And then also be sure to see your name and address the record.
Heather McCann, sixty-two, Cross and Drive. I wanted to start by thanking Lisa Hancock for all your hard work as our interim term manager. And we know that your work is going to be continued through the onboarding of our new term manager. But they members of our community, regardless of gender, identity, class, sexual orientation, and/or disability, race, or religion deserve a safe and equitable existence and talent and beyond. All people have a human right to be included in our conversations and yes, our literature. To exclude less than, that they don't matter and that they are inferior people. To deny their history or their story is to deny their existence. Youth who identifies LGBTQ and were being denied acknowledgement, recognition, and inclusion are either contemplating or committing suicide at alarming rates. This is not because of their identity, it's because of how others treat them as less than. Talent must not contribute to this problem. We must be a part of the solution. We need to keep the conversations going. We need to strive for better inclusion and we need to offer equitable representation in our library and all of our services. And we need to stop treating the LGBTQ community as something perverse or obscene. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Is there anyone else in the public? Or on Zoom again, if you can star nine or the raise hand function. Kenny Trice, I see.
Yes, Kenny Trice, fifty-three, Doe Run. Good evening, everybody. I'm just going to make a short statement. Lisa, I just wanted to say, and my words are going to be very feeble compared to what you've been able to do in terms of keeping the town going. So I just wanted to say thank you for what you've done. Appreciate it. And again, it's just a real simple statement compared to the monumental task that you've been able to do. So my thanks to you.
You're very welcome. It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public?
Samantha Lee. Hi, good evening. I am Samantha Lee, thirty-five, High Ridge Drive. I am also the Intellectual Freedom Chair of the Connecticut Library Association. I provide support to libraries and library workers as they are dealing with censorship issues and challenges. I wanted to address the town council here and remind people that libraries have an obligation to protect intellectual freedom, especially for our most vulnerable populations, including our LGBT community. That representation needs to be seen in our collection, on our books, on our shelves constantly. I want to commend our library staff for having those books and creating a welcoming space. Thank you.
Thanks, Samantha. Is there anyone else from the public?
Hi, Lindsay Summers-Ackey, one twenty-seven, Anthony Road. So from what I understand, there is talk about a ban of or concern about LGBTQIA books in the library. As Heather mentioned, LGBTQ youth suicide rates are insane. I work in behavioral health. I've had to deal with client suicides and it's not an easy thing to deal with. And these suicides again happen not because they are LGBTQ. It's because they're not accepted by their communities, by their peers. And it starts again at home, the values they're raised with. And if these books are being considered to be banned, the blood will be on your hands of these children who commit suicide. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else from the public or online? Going once, twice. All right, we'll loop on item six, there are no public hearing items. Seven, a reports of boards and committees to talk over the council. Are there any virtual updates mentioned, Councilor?
We did get an update from the Board of Ed facilities and town facilities regarding the reclamation of the field where the modulars were. That process is ongoing. The hope is, or maybe that's the wrong word. The expectation is that that field will be available for use as early as this fall. And you're subject to the effects of weather as to how successful that's going to be. So that's sort of out of everyone's hands, but that process is in place. I know last month, we did receive a communication from the soccer group, Town Soccer, about concerns about that field. And I have been assured, we have been assured that the process is ongoing. It will take, we've been told this from the get-go, it will take several years before the grass is fully reestablished to a fully lush and lovely soccer-playing environment. But it's growing, so that's good. I know.
Grass does that.
Eventually. And hopefully it just keeps going, keeping growing. So the, I understand that Bruce Swat is aware of when that field may be available and that both Board of Ed facility and town facility are on the same page as to the progression of that field. Otherwise, in terms of project closeout, we all desperately want to close out this project. And it's moving slowly, but it is moving.
Okay. And Councilor Murray, are there any other questions or any other reports? We'll move on to seven B reports of town council liaisons and that's the right, Councilor Murray, you got it.
Sure. The Agriculture Commission met this week. I wasn't feeling well, so I wasn't able to attend, but I did read the minutes. The Farm's Table Dinner seems to still be on track. First September fifteenth, I'm ninety-five percent sure I have that date correct. It is in the minutes and they are doing some more work on the Campbell Farm property. That seems to be, oh, they're, they're going to use some of the proceeds from the Farm's Table Dinner to have a scholarship for a Tolland student who would be studying agricultural things. Professional development. I don't know if that's, it sounded like they were pretty flexible about whether that's limited to a college or some other types of study. So they seem pretty excited about that.
Cool. Thank you, Councilor Murray, Councilor Tom, your reports. I had the Conservation Commission meeting last Thursday. People go up and down past Paul Killers, a nice big sign up there that they really get installed. That was a really great job, makes it very clear what it is. They're still working on their forestry management projects for the selective harvesting lumber. I think RCAC will still be first ideal location to begin that process. Once they get a file of work done, lot is moving ahead. They've got a few projects and I believe they applied for a grant in regards to Tolland Marsh. They could do that through the state or the Autobots Society, they're going to do an application there to help offset any costs for securing that property from a private resident. And then last night, the Library Foundation met. There were several requests for some software and equipment for the library that were nicely approved by the foundation. There was an update in the oral history projects. They should be sending out or drafting a Google Doc to get people that are interested in interviewing or being interviewed. So highly recommend if you are interested, you know, people in town, a few long-time residents, they'd like to get as many folks involved as possible in building a fat oral history. And even one of the softwares that they approved at the meeting actually will help create a perfect digital record of those recordings. So other than that, they have a couple of events coming up. I believe they are doing a training session, actually, they had a training session during night. They're planning another one at the end of the month, their Earthy July. And then they have a few other events coming up, but that's it.
I have nothing from the last meeting to this. We did have the parade though, so permanent celebrations that will be then until I and that will be for for celebrate on. But I do not have anything.
Planning is already met last night. I did not have an opportunity to sit in on the meeting, but that they did discuss the issues on rear lot subdivisions as well as the regulation updates regarding nineteen-two on signs and twenty-eight on special permits that I would refer anybody to regarding these issues to the minutes that will be forthcoming as well as recording of the, of the hearing Veterans Recognition Commission that we have remaining coming up this coming Thursday, that again, they participated in several different events, including the car show last, last month, as well as the Memorial Day Parade that they were part of that as well as had a tent over there. That it was a very, very good opportunity for us to be able to meet other veterans and especially at the parade ceremonies. And we did have the chair, Pern, Mater, actually did the recording of the Memorial Day ceremony that we had after the parade. Thank you.
Great. And Councilor Luba. And so covers that. Item eight is new business. So eight point one is consideration of resolution to approve the revised personnel policies and procedures and substance abuse policy. I know I think we have with us tonight, Michael Kinsley and Pat McHale, I think here for our labor attorney.
Yes, I am, I am in attendance.
All right, good to see you, Pat.
Nice to see you all.
So, yeah, so what's before you is some changes to the personnel policy. They were recommended by Pat's office to comply with recent changes in state and federal law. Just as a quick summary on pages two, twenty-eight, fifty-two, and fifty-five, there's language consistent with state law PA twenty-one dash two having to do with discrimination based on natural hair. On page eight, under compensation, we've updated the language to be consistent with PA twenty-one dash thirty having to do with pay ranges and publicizing pay ranges. On page twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we've updated to be consistent with PA twenty-one-two, which allowed time off to vote for employees, which I believe expires in two thousand and twenty-four unless it's changed. There's also some minor changes on page thirty-nine, fifty-six, and fifty-nine relating to disclosure of employment information, photo, video, and auto-taking in, at the workplace, and also smoking in the workplace. In addition, also, we're updating the substance abuse policy and putting it actually into the body of the personnel policy. As some of you may know, on July one, two thousand and twenty-one, the recreational marijuana law became legal in Connecticut and effective this July, two thousand and twenty-two. The workplace regulations regarding recreational marijuana are going into effect. So the changes to the substance abuse policy takes that into account. And what it really does is takes our policy and conforms it to the new law. It, what it does for us, I'll give an example. Most of our drug tests are pre-employment tests, so we can't necessarily do an adverse action just based on a positive marijuana test. We would have to, there's a stipulation that if someone does test, then we'd, they'd have to prove that it was based on medicinal need and also they'd have to meet several other criteria. So it takes that into account as far as what we can do as far as adverse actions if someone does test for marijuana. So that's a quick summary. Pat's also here, you can ask him any questions about that. But this basically just catches up us up with any recent legal changes for our personnel rules.
Thank you, Mike. I'll open the floor to any questions from council members.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question regarding the proposed policy. It's under the substance use, substance abuse policy. It'd be under the subsection A on page nineteen. And Mike, if you can address it, my concern here is because I've seen this in other cases, other court cases in other states, as well as in other employment issues, where it has the provision, an employee reporting to work and that it strikes out who is physically impaired, is unable to perform, is unable to properly perform required duties and will not be able to work. So it reads, an employee reporting to work impaired is unable to perform required duties and will not be allowed to work. That, I guess that the, the main concern is the definition of impaired. We have here not unable to properly perform required duties. That's still a bit nebulous. It's on page nineteen of sixty-four. Then I understand that where it's further on down on page twenty of sixty-four, where it says during employment, and it sort of elaborates as far as with the issue regarding reasonable suspicion. And, and it goes through the whole list of various factors. My concern is that just that one provision right there, that saying that an employer reported work impaired, that it needs to be more clear as far as what observations, what, you know, what would be considered to be impaired, you know, what, what would constitute properly perform required duties. So I think that that's something that, that would need to be addressed or at least refer to a, another provision, just because I've seen similar issues again in other court cases where they attack just that, I mean, just this exact wording because it's so, you know, unclear as far as the definition repaired and of properly performing required duties. You know, where if I'm a truck driver, you know, I can still drive the truck. But if I, you know, what if I have to do other, other duties as well? Or a teacher, you know, if the teacher arrives and that, you know, that they may not be able to conduct their full session, you know, I guess it's just, there's just a lot of, a lot of, you know, granularity that needs to be added to it.
May I, may I respond to that good question?
Sure thing. Go ahead, Pat.
So the paragraph that I think the council member is addressing with regard to impaired, there are two circumstances under which the town can conclude that someone is impaired. Those conditions would be the employee admits impairment or the employee, based on reasonable suspicion of the employer, is tested for drugs and alcohol and the test confirms that the employee is impaired. So in those two cases, the employee under the language will not be allowed to work. Reasonable suspicion on page twenty goes to, under what circumstances does the employer have the right to require an employee to submit to a test? And all those conditions come right out of, you know, the new statute regarding substance abuse and drug testing. So we were happy to look at impaired, but, but the intention of that language is to simply apply to where there's confirmation of impairment. And those two cases would be through an admission or through a positive drug test.
So if I may, so just so I'm clear, so then it's only that, so those are the only two times where the person either admits they're impaired or you subsequently, under the reasonable suspicion standard set forth on the substance abuse testing, that they're sent for a test and then it comes back confirmatory. Those are the only two times?
Those are the two occasions where we can confirm they're impaired. They admit they're impaired or there's a drug test that confirms they're impaired.
Okay, so I guess my question is then, what about those other situations where, you know, you have a, you, you know, you believe the person to be impaired, but it doesn't, you know, that they're unable to perform certain aspects of their duty, but that you're not, you know, it's not, doesn't rise to that standard of, you know, the reasonable suspicion standard of that they're, they're under, under the influence of some type of substance. Because I guess I'm trying to understand why you eliminate that who is visibly impaired, where if you make that determination that they appear to be impaired in some way, they're not being, they're not able to conduct their duties fully, that you're saying that we still wouldn't be able to send them home from work?
We could drug test them if they give us reasonable suspicion that they are impaired or under the influence of drugs or alcohol. We can always send an employee home with pay if we're concerned about their fitness for duty. And that applies to things beyond drug and alcohol testing. That would apply to someone who, you know, seems to be in pain when lifting items as part of his or her job. And we're concerned about their fitness for duty. We can, we can always deal with that circumstance by prohibiting an employee from continuing to work and to send them home with pay.
But then for the, for the reasonable cause standard, then protecting, then that would be, they would be sent to a, I mean, would it be sent to a testing facility or would it be something that, that, you know, I guess I'm trying to figure out how that testing would be done.
So we would either have a testing facility come to us on the premises of the workplace and test the employee. Or we would drive the employee to the testing facility and have the employee tested there.
Right, and I appreciate that. I mean, I, I understand the, the meaning of it and the, the whole purpose behind it. I just wanted it clear, you know, so that I could understand it, but also it's clear on the record as far as what the, what standard would be and what the, what the reason behind it would be. So I appreciate that, Pat. I think, I appreciate your help on that.
My pleasure.
Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Councilor Luba, Councilor Muto, and Councilor Murray.
Hey, Pat.
Hi there.
I have a quick question for you on follow-up from what Lou was just saying. Unless there's something that's been done and I don't know about it, which absolutely totally could be the case. I don't think we have an immediate test for THC, do we? Isn't it still the test and it tests whether or not you've had THC in your system for like the last nine days? So how do we be able to accurately be able to determine that?
Well, that's a great, that is a great question. And one of the problems with, you know, the, the medical marijuana and now the recreational marijuana law is that the testing hasn't caught up with, you know, the distinguishing factors that the law provides for. So if we have somebody who we believe is impaired with reasonable suspicion and we send them to be tested, provided we have the reasonable suspicion, we would have the right to put them out of work. We can't do it without the reasonable suspicion, but the law says if the employer has articulable reasonable suspicion and the individual comes back testing positive, in that case, we could put them out of work.
So in the case of this happening, if somebody came in, we thought they were impaired with THC, we would have to bring them for a test that would determine if they had THC in their system anytime in the past two weeks. And we have to continue to pay them even if they come to work impaired?
Well, whether we have to pay them or not is a function of our collective bargaining agreement. It's not a function so much of this policy. So we would have to look at the individual contracts at issue and determine whether they would leave with paid sick time or whether it would be without pay as a disciplinary matter.
We don't have that in our current contracts, correct? Because this is all new legislation.
Well, we have language about putting people out of work because they are not fit for duty. And so there are contract provisions that would allow for that in those cases.
Paid or unpaid?
Well, again, it depends on the contract language. I don't, I don't have them in front of me.
Your contract. Oh, that's right. I would be interested to understand that because I think the fact that we don't have comparable testing right now in a way to determine that today, somebody showed up and they're impaired with THC. And if they contest, we, you can come to work having, you know, being on THC and get a paid vacation day while we test you to find out if it's been in your system for the last two weeks, which I think, don't think is conclusive, so.
You, you've, you've hit the nail on the head in terms of what the problem is with regard to making these distinctions. With regard to alcohol influence, we can test whether someone's under the influence and impaired presently. And we can't test with that specificity with regard to THC. And until we can, you know, this is, we will be dealing with these vague and conflicting provisions. And, and I don't, I don't know how long that will be before we can.
You and me both, my friend. So I guess I would just ask that we make sure when the contracts come up that we review the language that's in there regarding somebody coming to work currently having, being on THC. I don't even know how to say that, like. I'm not saying that, forget it, in their system. So if we can just kind of put that on a, on a tickler for when the contracts come up.
Will do. That's a good point.
I have a question about the pre-employment substance abuse testing. The new language seems to indicate that applicants, oh, it's on page twenty of our packet. The changes seem to indicate that, well, not a change, applicants are required to voluntarily submit to a pre-employment drug test. And the new language says that an applicant may be denied employment if they test positive for cannabis. Am I reading that correctly?
Well, I mean, it goes, it goes further than that, right? It says an applicant may be denied employment based on his refusal to submit to a test or efforts to tamper with the test or if the individual has a positive test. But there's an exception for the positive test that's caused by medical marijuana use in accordance with the law. So if someone, if someone has a medical marijuana card and they test positive at a pre-employment drug test, they cannot be denied employment solely on that basis. Whereas someone who uses recreational marijuana under the terms of this policy could.
What is the reasoning behind that?
Well, the reason behind it is because the medical marijuana isn't a voluntary decision. It's, it's a decision that's as a result of a medical determination of the need for palliative use of marijuana. You know, why the law couldn't have been read differently or written differently, I can't tell you. But in this case, it, it makes a distinction between whether you're recreationally using marijuana or whether it's a prescribed use of marijuana. The law has always allowed management to provide these tests and disqualify an applicant as long as the company, in this case, the town, puts applicants on notice that it's a condition of hire that they take a pre-employment drug test and it reveals no existence of drugs or alcohol. There are also exceptions that you'll see buried in this policy in various provisions. One of the things you need to keep in mind is while Connecticut has, you know, opened up to the idea of recreational marijuana, the federal government has not. And the federal government has all sorts of regulations on the types of positions that are disqualified in terms of the applicant or the employee who tests positive. And an example would be in your public works department, employees who, as a condition of their hire, are required to have a commercial driver's license are subject to testing. And if those folks are in a pre-employment situation and they test positive, whether it's recreational or medicinal, they're disqualified from hire.
Thank you. Thank you uh for that answer. I apologize. I don't believe I asked my question specifically enough. Um, I was asking why the town is cons- considering not hiring someone if they test positive for a legal substance without a medical card?
Well, because we can't.
Oh.
The town doesn't have to have that policy. The town can say any pre-employment testing that reveals alcohol uh, ma- marijuana use of any kind is not a disqualifier, but um the policies that we recommend to clients, um, you know, would consider it a dis- a disqualifier. But the, but that's discretionary, to be clear. That's a discretionary um, you know, action of the, of the employer.
But why do you recommend that we do it this way?
Well, most of our clients are concerned about employees still. Even though the law has changed, they're still concerned about employees uh being under the influence of drugs and alcohol or having it in their systems. And, and prior to the Connecticut law being passed, this was never a question.
Are there other substances that are legal that we don't allow our employees to have in their system?
I don't, I don't know that there are.
So I, I'm just, I'm not sure why the distinction on, on cannabis.
We don't have to have the distinction. W- we drafted it in this policy like all the other municipal policies we've drafted because generally clients have wanted it. If, if, if Talon does not want it to be a disqualifying circumstance for an employee to be disqualified from hire when in a pre-employment drug test they test positive for marijuana, we, we can modify the policy. That's certainly within the discretion of the council.
Okay, are there other towns that uh include this in the, in the policy? You could give us examples of?
Well, I can't tell you the towns because of confidentiality rules, but all the towns we represent have adopted this language.
Okay, how about Mike? Is this something you could talk about, whether other towns in our area in Connecticut have this policy in place? Because the policy itself can't be confidential. Um, so I'm wondering if there are other towns that have a similar policy?
I, I can certainly look into that. Again, I, um, I assume many of them do. Um, this is kind of standard language. It's what Pat and I talked about as far as what towns, most towns are doing based on this new law. And um, so uh, I could certainly research that and find policies if they've updated it by now. Some, a lot of towns, sometimes towns don't, don't get, get it around to it until after the effective date, but, you know, we could certainly research that. But my recommendation we, that would be that we use this language.
Come. Why do you recommend that?
Um, just like I said, I, I think we have a concern about people coming to work either with alcohol or drugs in their systems. So uh particularly when you're um in the process of hiring a new employee. So that's a concern. I, I certainly have that as a concern.
We have a track record of hiring or having people, employees having on fitness, not being fit to work due to them being under the influence?
Um, I'm not sure how, uh, how much we want to talk about in public session. I guess I'd defer to Pat on how much I should say about something like that in open session.
Well, I, I, I wouldn't name any employees, but if there are examples of individuals passing their uh or failing their random drug testing or reasonable suspicion drug testing, you could certainly share that.
Yeah, again, um, there's probably been probably two to three since I've been here, so it's, it's not a, it's not a common occurrence, I think, since I've started.
And just to give me a frame of reference, Mike, how, how long, how long are we talking, right? Ten years?
Uh, no, I've, I've been here sixteen years, so.
Sixteen years, so handful of times in sixteen years?
Yeah, or, or less than a handful.
Okay, so I guess um, I'm not really comfortable then with the town having a pre-employment requirement that applicants can't use a substance that is legal. The, the legality of that substance is not within the purview of this council uh as it is a state law. And uh, whether I agree with that particular law or not, I am not really comfortable saying that you can't work for us as a town if you use a legal substance, a substance that is legal in our state. That's what I, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Murray. And I have one quick follow-up question, Pat, just in terms of the language. Um, in terms of the phrase may, if that used, and I can't name towns, although it wants to represent, but has may been consistent in, in compared to shall?
Well, when we draft policies, we like to give discretion to the town to be able to consider the unique circumstances they're facing. And so we use the word may to allow for that discretion.
So there's sort of kind of leniency, and so might, would this then vary depending on who's being hired? So as an example, if it's a director or a, you know, basic old staff member or even say, you know, a town manager, you know, we're going through the hiring process, you know, would it, the, the denial be based on who's the ultimate hiring authority?
It would. It would be based on the decision of the town manager.
Okay. I think that covers it for me for questions right now. Senator Luba, for a second, Pat?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, either one of you have any additional questions?
I guess.
I'll defer, I'll defer.
I'm sorry, I was late, so I missed the conversation. Sure, everybody has a question. Um, Katie already asked a question, uh, all some other towns doing this, I would think that you would know um by, like Katie said, his policy. I mean, I guess that you could find out anybody's website. So I'm confused why you wouldn't have that information ready for us. And I mean, I'm torn on this one. It's only like, you, you wouldn't want somebody coming to work, especially workers that are firemen or public works, coming in intoxicated or drunk or anything. I would think that that would be the same as marijuana if you can get high off it, right? I mean, that's similar. So I mean, I'm, I understand that it's a legal substance, but so is an alcohol or, I mean, Lisa, like people that take prescribed pain medication for whatever reason. Is that not allowable as well if you go on to test them and they come up positive?
No, I mean, that in, no, I mean, if you, you have pain medication in your system, it doesn't come up as something, you know, you hire somebody, you, but you do try to find out. You know, if someone's using an opioid and when you have an opioid addiction, you know, you try to find out what the reasons that these things are in their system if they test positive. And you give them, you get the information, then you make your decision at, at that point. That as the attorney was recommending with the use of word may rather than shall, it gives you the opportunity to determine the reason why it may be in the system. Someone tested positive for THC, marijuana. Um, if they never didn't disclose that they had a medical card and then you find out they have a medical card, then that's no reason to dismiss or not.
So I guess another question, I didn't know, Lisa, it just popped in my head, but what if like, just they end up particularly concerned about any of the drivers in our town, but say if they got pulled over, they got, you know, I don't know, you know, we have state police in that town, but if they got pulled over um for concern of driving and they were tested, the town would be responsible for that?
Sure.
I guess that would be another concern we should.
Yeah, and, and you know, those are some of the reasons why we take precautions regarding so uh drugs or alcohol while working or, or depending on the position. You have to be careful of those things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Luba and Uchio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think that, uh, and uh, Ms. Murray, I understand the argument being put forward, but I would also draw the similarities on this where, you know, you, if you're coming in for a pre-employment screening, I mean, that's something where you know that you're coming in, you have to submit to this urine test, that it would be, I would draw the similarities, like if somebody can't stay clean long enough, like if they're going in and they drink alcohol and they show up and they test positive for alcohol. You know, again, there's people that, that have issues that, that, you know, there's alcoholism, which is something that is, is a horrible disease. But if you, you know, that's something, same lines along with the, with using uh marijuana, using uh or smoking cannabis, that if you know this drug test is coming up and you can't keep yourself clean long enough to be able to pass a pre-employment urine test, I think that's something that also draws an issue and creates an issue uh as far as concerns for whether or not this is somebody that we, we would want to be in this position where, you know, if they can't stay that clean that long, then there's going to be an issue. Also, the, I think the whole thing of testing positive and I, uh, Pat and uh, and Mike, that you might be able to speak to this uh better, that the testing positive, positive test results, including uh THC, then it all depends on the positive, everything I think considers a zero level, zero nanogram test to be the requirement for a positive, I mean, for a negative test. But that different uh screening companies have different screening levels. Where I know for, uh, having my experience with Coast Guard, we would test merchant mariners that the cutoff was twenty nanograms and that would be considered a positive test. And then you had different levels, that different screening tests uh would say this is a positive test. So if it's something that is a lower level, which shows past history of use but not a current usage, that's one thing where if you're testing and you come in and test positive at, you know, three hundred fifty nanograms, that means pretty much that you came in and you smoked the day before, before you came in, which would create a concern if you, again, you're going in for a pre-employment urine, urine test. So I understand the concerns, but I still think that this is something that um, again, is, is something that is accepted across, you know, across, uh, across the spectrum of various employers that it's uh accepted in other towns. I'd like to say, Mike, to see what other towns and how many other towns do follow this, but I think it's something that, that is reasonable and rational, uh rational, given the concerns that we have where it's pre-employment. And if it was post-employment, then there's other steps we need to take to ensure that our employee gets a proper care treatment. But for pre-employment, if you, you should be able to, you should at least be able to stay clean long enough to be able to, be able to take a, some type of test. That's just my concerns. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Actually, Senator Uchio, okay, I have a quick question to say about those, Councilman Luba, is a quick follow-up. Um, from, from Mike, possibly this would be probably the best person to ask this question. Are these policies posted publicly and would applicants be made aware in advance of any need to test for drug screening essentially?
Well, well, again, these are the public, these are the personnel rules, so they're on our website. Every new employee gets them. All the current employees will get the updated copy. When we hire someone, we give them a hire letter that states they're required to take a pre-employment physical and drug screen and passing is contingent on them being hired, so they're certainly aware of that. Um, and that, that usually takes place within a two-week or three-week window before they start. Um, so it's, it's given to all current and prospective employees uh as far as what they, what the policy is and what we need to do for them to be hired.
Okay, then, Senator Uchio?
Yeah, so kind of like follow-up for what Lou was saying. I'm fine with the policy being the way it is. I have a daughter who's a nurse. She has pre-employment testing. My daughter was a pre-employment testing. My daughter was interning at a hospital for a psych ward, pre-employment testing. Now, I had to do pre-employment testing, so I'm fine with that. I think we have people here on the roads that are in dangerous conditions, be it snow or the firemen and everybody else and that, and um people working with the public and that. So I'm fine with the town having a, a no drug, a no alcohol policy. And I know from the federal perspective, if we had anybody who tested positive, we would lose any federal grants or anything. So this is something I think, yeah, Medicaid made this legal, but it's not federally recognized yet. And while we don't do anything with the federal government here, I think it's a standard practice. I don't think it's objectionable. And I do believe, like we said, when they do the test, you can see a range, you know, so it's, I'm fine with it.
Senator Uchio?
I think it's just, uh, again, sorry if this was already. So I would assume this would if the town does random drug testing, right? And so I would assume, I like, I work for a hospital, so I get it. It's a random testing and would assume that if there's, you find something, do you give them a warning or is there, talk about it? I know sometimes there's steps that are involved, you let them go.
No, there's, there's various steps involved. And Mike, if you want to comment on that.
Again, we, we, again, we, just to be clear, we don't random test our employees for drugs. Uh, the only people that do that are people that are part of the CDL program. So um, it would really have to be some type of suspicion, so um, but like Pat mentioned at the earlier part of the meeting, so. And, you know, we would, we would deal with that once we got to it and, you know, would depend on many circumstances. But, you know, obviously there's a disciplined process that we can follow that's in each contract and things like that, so.
Well, I just CDL, I mean, I, it would be, I know, but I would think that everybody would be, I mean, I work office staff and I could get random tests. And so I don't think it would be fair that everybody would be at the same. Aren't we contractually, isn't it, I know in our budget every year, because I've asked about it probably about four times in the last six years, there's testing that we pay for that's standard with like the public works, the people with the, like, like you mentioned, the CDL, like they have, don't they have like, you're shaking it.
Yeah, that's a, that's a program that's run through the DOT. The, the, the testing program and everything is run through the DOT. So that's, that's not even in the town's hands. We, you know, people are randomly chosen and tested periodically. Um, it's a different kind of program than the town's program that we have for pre-employment. Um, and again, if we had any type of suspicion or anything.
Yeah, if I could just add, Connecticut law does not allow random testing unless there's a federal requirement to do it. And so with the CDL, it's a Department of Transportation regulation and it's required. Otherwise, Connecticut law doesn't allow us to randomly test employees.
Then why even test them if we start with? Because if you know you're getting a physical, there's ways to, we check that too, right? I mean, to me, I would actually prefer random testing to be quite honest.
Senator Uchio?
That's it.
Senator Murray?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm confused now because I'm looking at my packet on page twenty-one. Uh, the last, the last sentence in the top paragraph says, "The town may also conduct random drug and alcohol testing of employees as allowed or required by and in accordance with any applicable state or federal laws and collective bargaining agreements." But Pat just said we're not allowed to do random drug testing. So I'm not, I apologize if I'm missing something, but those two things seem to be contradictory.
Let, let me, please, please let me respond. What I said was it's not allowed unless it's required. So Department of Transportation and the federal regulations for those who possess commercial driver's licenses are required to be subjected to random testing. And so this sentence is intended to incorporate where it's legally required, we do random testing. But if it's not legally required, we don't.
Okay. Um, all right, and the uh pre-employment uh testing or the presence of uh cannabis that uh is not necessarily, or that is handled differently for, I'm going to use the wrong word, exempt positions versus non-exempt? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, don't, I don't, I'm not following your question.
There's a, in, in all this uh policy, there's a group of exempt positions, which are uh people whose position has the potential to impact health or safety of employees such as a firefighter, EMT, police officer.
Yeah.
Requiring a CDL, uh, something like that. Those people are handled differently for pre-employment screening than non-exempt? Is that correct?
Not for, not, not for pre-employment screening. For those people, even if you have a medical marijuana card, you have a prohibition on hiring them. There's no exception for that. So folks who are, have safety-sensitive positions that are specified in the regulations, they, I have more onerous scrutiny, and whereas if someone's not a safety-sensitive physician, otherwise known as an exempt physician, any testing is problematic for them.
Okay. Well, I guess I'd be more interested, I'd be interested, Mike, in, in your offer to get some more information about what other towns are doing in terms of pre-employment drug testing for non-exempt employees. And I, I think Counselor Luba had some very good points that certainly I want to think about a little bit more.
Are there any other questions from council members? I'll take a little left, the room for a moment, so I might make it back before we go to the resolution.
Steve, I mean, it sounds like we're going to get a little bit more information. Can we wait for that information to approve this?
I believe we do have to, we do have to pass during these policies because of state law expect July first, that's why this was put on the agenda, because there was a bit of urgency in applying some of these changes.
Well, not to jump the gun, but maybe we don't have to take up the next agenda item then, and we could, I mean, if we're waiting for more information that we were offered regarding these policies.
Well, I guess I don't know if the expectation was that Mike be looking at it now and getting us answers on the fly, or if you're expecting just follow-up information at a subsequent meeting, is that? You were, what are you looking for?
Well, my question was, is this pre-employment drug screening for a legal substance consistent with other towns? And I, there was no answer to that question, there was, I assume so. There was, our other clients have this, but the attorney can't disclose his clients for confidentiality reasons. So they, my question wasn't answered, and several other people referenced being interested in the answer to the question.
Well, I guess.
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Well, I guess the question would be, are people comfortable moving forward with the entire policy as is? Or are there any particular policies that we would want to either have a straw poll vote, just to informally get a feel for what we're feeling about certain policies, policies of the whole before you have a formal decision.
Yeah, I think the, I was going to say, what happens if we don't vote?
Again, I, Pat can jump in, but you, you can change this policy at any time, you could pass it now and then change it in a month, so. Again, we brought this before you, so that would, it would be in line with what the new law is taking effect July first, so. So my recommendation would be that you vote, but it's ultimately up to the council.
Thank you. Colin, if you're all set?
I am all set, thank you.
No, no, no comment, okay.
Can we pass it without Section B, the pre-employment section?
I'll be honest, I'm comfortable moving forward with the as is, I think to me, the Bay, to me, is kind of the selling point, if it was a shall, that would be more concerning. I think there's some discretion in it, now hiring agencies to do. I think additionally, the fact that we can go back to this at a later date, if things change, especially like now, we're doing it because of state laws, if laws at a state level change going forward, we probably might have to revise it anyways in certain sections, so. Just to me, I'm comfortable with moving forward with things as they are, and giving the information, and if councilors, so feel pretty good changing that section to bring it back to a future council meeting. This is my perspective. So, there's no other discussion? I have a motion to approve the draft resolutions outlined in.
I'll second it. Sorry, go ahead.
He made motion to blah, blah, blah.
Entertaining the motion.
He entertained.
Is there any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Same here, you and I.
So that is four to two. And that passes, so we'll go to eight point two, which is a consideration of our resolution to cancel the June twenty-eighth council meeting. Summary is pretty straightforward. We normally have meetings second and fourth Tuesday, but due to, you know, a special joint meeting with historic districts, special disabilities, on the twenty-ninth, we were planning to cancel that meeting and have the one on the twenty-ninth, so. If there's any questions or messages like that.
I didn't say anything, I mean, said nothing.
Are you going to pass right now?
Give me one of those little, like, I actually have one question, and that is, you know, when we're going to get the information from the consultant? Because I'm definitely going to want to review all that.
I've been asking daily. Understanding is that they're putting the final pieces together. So I'm hoping as soon as I get it, I'll get it out to all of you, even before an agenda is issued, I'll get it out to the commissions as well, so everybody can have an opportunity. But right now, I don't have it.
Yeah, I think the intent is hopefully to get at least a week, week and a half notice, I'm sure it'll be a very detailed.
Communicated that on several occasions, and it's just in the hands of the consultant, so. I'll double-check again tomorrow.
I'll buy and be patient. So if there's no further discussion, I can get a motion to approve resolutions outlined in eight point two. So, is there a second?
Second.
Second, also Murray. You know, further discussion, all of them favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that is unanimous. We are on to eight point three, which is a consideration of our resolution needing seven hundred fifty thousand for fire truck, hundred and forty thousand for servicing of track, per one hundred fifteen thousand forty-eight for landlord, acquisition appropriated one ninety-one eighty seventy-eight for media walkway improvements, and operating charges of up to one point one nine seven, three hundred and sixty-six dollars in bonds and notes, the financing appropriation, and setting up a public hearing there on, on July twelve, point two. And I kind of saw it hit it pretty quickly, but actually, please, if you want to add anything, and I don't know if you're.
Meeting, job. Stop it.
Don't worry, I'm going to have questions for you.
Yeah, I know, I already know what they are.
You know what they are.
And I can answer if you even ask it.
Just, oh, come on, let's have a fun, let's have a fun.
Let me just caveat all this with, this is part of the normal process that we go through every year. The capital improvement plan included these projects as potential bonded, funded projects. We have to go through a process where we introduce it in the previous fiscal year before, since you're canceling the meeting, I put it on tonight's agenda. And then we will have the public hearing in July, which will allow for it to be approved. And what that does is puts the bonding resolution in place that allows us to issue the debt. Now, with that said, I, I know one question is going to be, well, I know we're considering a lot of projects for other funding sources, such as ARPA and so forth. By doing this resolution, it's not going to stop you from deciding to do anything different. You can use the ARPA funds, we just would not issue the debt. And you would be doing a resolution to authorize the use of those funds anyway. I already checked this out with our bond council, make sure it's appropriate. What we would do is just not issue the debt. And we'd be in the same situation like we did with other parts that we already put in place.
That was my question. Close, though. Actually, my question was, how are we looking for the end of the year balances? What kind of money do we have left at the end of the year, and is it a possibility to use any of that to go towards any of this? Still get tripped up over a hundred and fifty thousand, fifteen thousand dollar landlord.
Um, I don't have a final number yet, we've just started working on them, and I've been, my plan today was to work on that, but it got sidetracked with so many other issues that came down the pike unexpectedly. So I'm hoping maybe tomorrow that I could start looking at that analysis to see where we'll at. Also, I'm working on a final budget book, which will include where I think we're going to be with the updated numbers, the updated five-year long-term plan. I, I need to work on all of that to be able to get the book.
Okay, I would just say, since this is, since we're going to set the meeting, you know, obviously, we're just starting a public hearing. And since we're going to set the public hearing for July twelve, I would hope by then, maybe we could have some high-level estimates to see if there's money left from this fiscal year that we can use rather, you know, I mean, I hate that, rather than issuing the debt, we can use any of those funds to purchase something instead of issue the debt. So with the public hearing being set for the twelve, I think, would that give you enough time to?
Yeah, I, I hope, I hope to have this done. I, I'd like that it was done this week. So no more questions?
Any other questions?
Any particular person?
Yeah, I mean, I know we discussed this through a committee, and I guess she just said it's a normal process, so I was surprised that it was on the agenda for tonight, when it wasn't discussed at the last meeting, but and at the last subcommittee, I guess that was a special meeting, we really couldn't talk about it. Well, we're not, no, I know, but I'm just saying that the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, I definitely want it on at least the next, our next agenda to discuss, I mean, I think we're going to talk about it there, and I would think sooner or better.
It's before July. Yeah, well, we're having one in June, right, so we should be good.
Man, definitely. Support the fire department, I have a question about that, which is, how are we going to use those funds and?
You could, you can even pass this resolution on July twelve after the public hearing, and you can still say, "I'd rather use the ARPA funds rather than issuing the debt." I'm not going to issue the debt right in July. My next debt issuance is in September, but even then, what it takes, for example, to put a fire truck bid together and everything else, I wouldn't be ready to issue the debt for that particular vehicle in September anymore. Um, we look at everything, so certainly, we can have it on the next agenda to discuss it on your ARPA agenda, and we can determine how you want to move forward with it.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want, you know, clarification for my own purposes, or just clarification, that now, this is what we have already approved previously?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, I just want to make that clear on the record, because I know people look at this like, "Oh, my gosh, we're, like, what are you guys doing?" You just, you know, we just went through two budget things where everyone's screaming about money. And, but this is something that we had addressed during the capital budget here, discussion, that had been previously approved, that we've gone through all the hearings with the reasons why this is needed. So people want, if people have questions about why we're looking at spending this money, this, they could refer back to the hearings that we had on these issues previously. So this isn't anything new, it's just a matter of, they were setting it down to actually issue, like, to get the, get the authorization, issue device, is that correct?
Yes, part of our capital.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, just part of it, but usually after we go through the whole budget process, the budget referendum, everything else, the capital program is confirmed and ready to go forward July first.
No, so I just wanted to clear that this isn't something new that we're considering. These are things that are already been discussed pretty thoroughly.
That is correct.
And that, that this is something that we're just now looking to actually issue the files.
This is an implementation of the budget that's been passed by the public.
Thank you. She speaks Luba, that's awesome. Thank you, I, I just wanted to check on that, thank you.
And just, as, as we're discussing the appropriations, because our charter requires the bonding resolution to be in place, this is how we do it for the timing, there's all things that relate to the non-referendum bonding in the charter. So the timing of how we do it from one year to another has to be in this timeframe, or it could lead into other situations that could cause problems for us. So that's why we do this, and if we decide not to do it, it just frees up us having to issue that debt.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are there any other questions from council members?
I just wanted to say thank you, Lisa, for answering all my questions about this one, because I know I asked them. That's my email, so yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
There's no other discussion, I have a motion to approve.
Yeah, I do have one question. Sure you really want this? You sure you really want that truck?
I'm about ready to wreck your world. I'm all good with it.
All good, thank you, I'm just, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Counselor Luba. So, with that being said, I didn't get a motion to approve the resolution outlined in eight point three and setting up a public hearing on July twelve, point two.
Just gotta stay it, Colin, you gotta jump in there and just say it.
Do a roll call vote, too, or just do the heck of it.
What's that?
On, on this one, I would do a roll call vote to set. Yeah. Just to be safe.
Counselor Meecham, you get to go first.
Yes.
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 I have an eye, so there's unanimous, so hearings on its own.
Thank you.
All right, eight point four, consideration of approval of transfer funds being able to reserve account for capital projects when we make two forty refurbishment. I'm just going to say it before we even get to discussion, they said Brian Chief and Carl might get two chairs and sit up in the front, just in case you question.
Drag itself right up there.
I know there were a few questions represented, it's previously online, so I'm sure they may be hedged out here.
Certainly, as you, the chief and the deputy chief are here this evening to discuss this, this particular some equipment was also in the capital plan. And it was to be funded by ambulance reserve fund. Now, historically, certain refurbishments, certain types of fire gear, things like that have been, and purchases of ambulances have been paid for ambulance reserve fund. What we're asking to do is, is two things. One is to be able to appropriate the funds, excuse me, before July first in order to get a contract in place to purchase, to put an order in for this particular referred refurbishment process. The second piece of this is requesting a bid waiver because of, there's various reasons which the chief will discuss, but mainly having to do with consistency, the familiarity with the equipment. We just refurbished another one that was exactly like this by the same vendor. We did go out to bid last time for the same type of vehicle, and this particular vendor did come in as low as dealer. They're, they maintain our equipment, they're very familiar with the pump systems, the various pieces of it, and they've done an excellent job. So the chief has requested to have a big waiver, not only for those reasons, but also because of the timing. I think it was the end of June that there might potentially be another price increase, but he can correct me on that if I'm wrong. And we're concerned about price increases going constantly up, and we've been facing that, I have some other things to chat with you all this evening about regarding prices going up, but so those are some of the issues, but certainly, John, if you want to elaborate or be available for questions, where did I cover it?
If they open the floor to any questions from council members, either to Lisa or to either Deputy Judge or Chief Blackwell.
So I just really want to know how much is in the ambulance fund, like the capital?
Six twenty-seven, five eighty-two, we could possibly pass right in there. Fifteen thousand or more when we close the year.
I apologize, I missed it, but you know, you also, do you also need ambulance replacements, too?
Yeah, one's in Harvard right now, broke it down.
Right, so we're using the money for your truck, when we need.
The ambulance, the ambulance fund is probably a whole nother, I know there were some questions on that, that's probably, that should be probably another night for set up to review and kind of go over for explanatory of how that was set up, and what else goes into that fund. And that's a whole, that's a big, that's a big dialogue.
And it's perfect time to review it, look at it. But the ambulance is always, we always maintain, Lisa's always done a great job of maintaining the balance to replace and make sure there's always enough money for that ambulance. Whatever's left, we try to use for other major repairs or other types of stuff. But it's always been a catch-all, because that's the only thing that we have. It's a good place, moving to capital budget like most of, and the other types of categories.
The ambulances are the first priority of the use of the funds within this fund. And we currently have one on order, but it's been on order for quite a while now. And again, we don't even have a VIN number yet. We've ordered almost a year ago.
Welcome, welcome to the world.
Why, why are we down there?
That's, that's where we are from a year.
Yeah.
So is that one that's on your list already contemplated, gate for?
Well, it's not paid for.
Well, we have a, we have a, we have a purchase order, we have everything allocated for.
So I guess my question is, we have $600,000. Is it already been deducted that the cost of the ambulance that's on order or?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, that's pulled out of, that's the amount available to be utilized going forward. We have a whole plan that when we look at the five-year capital improvement plan, and you'll see each year has something under the ambulance reserve, or we may have fire trucks under bonding, because this fund could certainly not cover the cost to replace a fire, fire truck apparatus. But within those five years, we have an estimated amount of income that we think we'll have, including what we currently have. And we look at how much we plan on taking out based on those future expenditures. So we, we try to always make sure that there will be money in the fund to cover what we're proposing in the next five years.
Thank you. Counselor Yuric, are there any other questions from council members?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Is the specs of this refurbishment identical to the refurbishment that happened in 2020?
Basically, what ends up happening is the truck that was done in 2020 was the 2000. It's a sister truck of this truck, which is 2005. The problem with this truck is this truck is down here. This is the truck that uses Interstate 84. So this truck has had significant repairs already, or it's got stuff that's inside. So we pre-planned, we already know what we went through with ET140, which is the 2000. This is the 2005. It's identical truck. So they've already, they know where they're looking. They know where to go. We've gone through four other re-furbs that we used other companies over the last 15 years. And we've had nothing but headaches or problems. This company is already, we've already switched over the last two to three years, like Lisa said, that they're doing the servicing, they're doing the maintenance. So they know the underneath of the truck. They already know. They've had a good look at it. Our problem is, is as you get an estimate a year late, you know, the estimate that we're here from last year, we've had a relook yet. You can look at right now anywhere between a 7% at the end of June to by the time you end up trying to push, and that's why I'm trying to push for, for not bid, I think bid waiver is the wrong word, but it's, you know, consistency, standardization, to keep it consistent and standard, because everything's gonna match. But basically, as time goes on, it's the delay of the parts, the delay of stuff. I have a fire truck that's coming in that I've just got a memo on that's gonna have no rear bags. So I got some big, I got some big headaches, but this, this company, it's close by. We can send somebody up. We can keep our eyes on it and keep, and we have a good relationship with the company because they're already do all of our testing and everything else wise. But it's close enough that we can keep sending people up there to keep an eye on it and, you know, overlook it, double check and make sure things are being done. The problem is, is I went back through after a lot of your questions, which were awesome questions. These were extra stuff that was found after the refurb was, you know, what they gave a spec. You can build a spec, but once you take the tank, once you take the inside mechanical stuff out, it's, you don't know what you're gonna end up finding. We've done some major repairs to this truck already, and it's the point where I try to make a command decision for the, for the community. The 2000 rescue that we're replacing, that's beyond anything that you want to be putting a dollar more into. This is a salvageable truck where when it comes done off the refurb, it goes to the outline station. And I guarantee with the past practice that you get another 10 to 12 years out of a piece of apparatus. So, you know, you spend that 140, now we're up to 180. And now he just gave me another price today saying, if you don't sign within the next, well, you can go out. So I brought up back sheet, the last company that fitted on ET140 over that 140,000, because I did three quotes Lisa made me go for last night. That quote was $229,000. So almost a hundred thousand dollars more than, you know, this company. And they treat us good. They've been good and have made do with where the mistakes were, which they've stood behind their product, which is great. And the town of Mansfield actually switched over, kind of Mansfield's switching over. A lot of people are switching over to that company, which is good, because the other company is obviously lost employees, old-time people have left, so you don't get it. But this is gonna, this company's got a good rep. So, you know, we did our homework on our stuff, but is it gonna be enough as we move forward throughout the year? I can't sit here and guarantee, I can't tell you that, but the same as like the ambulance money that you're asking for. And that's a whole nother, I'm gonna hit you with that in July, because that is already, and we just got contacted today from another manufacturer over something else that we're gonna have a discussion on. It's, it's just, it's not, it's not pretty. So I don't know if that kind of answers the stuff, but we have a whole set of specs that pretty much is gonna duplicate ET140.
And the specs for this vehicle, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna read it. We just said, the last sentence you said was the specs for this refurb model, are modeled after the specs which went out to bid in 2020.
Correct. Yep. Yep, they're identical. So basically, what we had is three manufacturers come up.
Yeah.
You go through it, you tell us what you're finding, everything else, draw us up a repair bill. You go through this, you drop us, and we've compared the two of them. Did I knock some stuff out? Yeah, I did. I knocked the ACL and I knocked an extended deck down. I would love the AC and fire trucks for the firefighters, because rehab is the biggest thing. But I couldn't put in that extra 17,000, so the guys were mad at me, but we knocked out the, the 280 units. But they're identical to the D.
Okay. So that's what, that's what I really wanted to get at. So thank you very much. So we're being asked to consider a bid waiver for identical services which went out to bid in 2020, which the town received those services, was very satisfied with the services, and wishes to use the same company to do the same work on a newer model of the same vehicle. And that's what we're being asked for the, to approve the bid waiver.
And if you could put those words for my July bid waiver that I'm gonna have for it, that'd be awesome. Because I think that's what I wanted to write.
Lisa's writing it down. Thank you. So I think that, thank you, because I think that makes me a lot more comfortable with the bid waiver portion of this resolution. So thank you. Lisa, I know that I asked you this question. I just wanted to put on the record, and I think Chief Leal actually touched on this a little bit. We don't have a policy, a written policy for the ambulance reserve fund. Is that correct?
It was set up like Lisa's, oh.
Gotcha.
Thank you, boss.
Step in.
I've been, I've been retrained. So basically, we set that up years ago. Started off at 98, real quick, fast story. Started off at 98. I didn't like the way it was being handled, because it was being done, and it was done by some personnel. So we went to a commercial company. We finally went to a commercial company. We set that up. Then I took over in 2000, 2001. We've had multiple meetings. When Peter Curry was here, an intern way back in the day, we decided to set that policy up to start putting a reserve fund, an apparatus reserve fund, where whatever leftover money from the ambulance would start building to replace that 500,000, $1 million truck. But what ended up happening is budgets, referendums, budgets. So where's, where's the cookie? And I don't mean to call it cookie pop-up. Where's the, where's the source you can pull? And that's what we started doing. But we also had some repair monies. Over that past time, we really have created two extra accounts on town, offices and policies, fire marshal stuff, and as well as rescue. All that's dumped in there. I personally think that some of that should be separated, and we should look at it to set up building accounts, because then you can look at it.
Correct.
So, but basically, it's set up to replace ambulances first.
But there's no written formal policy. You'll find minutes, years and years ago, and please don't make me look.
No, no.
But we're gonna discuss that.
I'll think of it for you.
I know that I've had to research some of it way back when I first started here, because I was trying to keep more for the general fund, and John didn't want me to.
Get your hands on a cookie pop.
Exactly. Because we do keep a portion of those funds in the general fund, but it's not much. But, and that was because of them.
The only policy you're gonna find is the way we were set up in 2000, you're gonna find a policy from Dick Knight, back when Dick Knight was here, and I'll go right back to the rewind button. He started it. We started a policy. The town would take the first 50,000, and then it was supposed to minus 10,000 until you get to a zero balance, and everything was supposed to go into that account. So that was really the big town meeting that was passed, back when Dick Knight was there.
Okay.
And that's ages.
Okay. But you did say to us that this, I appreciate the information you gave us, Lisa, where the first use of this fund is for replacing ambulances. And beyond that, additional monies have been used in the past for refurbishments similar to what we're being asked to consider tonight.
Refurbishments, fire gear.
Service trucks.
What do you call those things?
Defense.
The, and the breeders, the scuba, the SCBA.
Correct.
Breeding.
All the airbags came out of it.
So thank you. I just, I wanted to make sure that I was aware that we put on the record that this is not an unusual use of this fund. And while it doesn't have a policy, we are following path of restment. Right. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't clarify that before.
No, you did. I just wanted to, sometimes it helps me if I repeat it, so I apologize.
No, absolutely.
Murray, you to check the question?
Yeah. So again, we have a lot of your items on our subcommittee. I mean, the engine 240 refurb is on our list. I mean, will it be?
The 180?
That we're talking about, this is engine.
ET 240?
Yeah, that's not ours.
Or is it engine?
ET 540.
This is 240, or am I wrong?
240 is what we're doing now.
Right. So 240 is on our committee list.
Is it?
Yep. Mine nine on that thing.
I don't believe it.
I know you don't, but it's.
What's the dollar amount?
Under $80,000.
All right. So.
So I mean, is a better use through?
The ambulance that we use this, because the ambulance fund? Yeah, because we could speak about that in the committee meeting. But I think the best use of any ARPA funds for capital would be for the ones that are either being paid for by debt, number one, or by the general fund, things like that. But this, when we have accumulated, we have a plan in place of how to pay for it. And I think it'd be preferable to do it this way. We could take, we need to take a look at the complete listing, get it up to.
Right, just fingers and hands here.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? All right. Seeing that, and if you have a motion to pass the resolution as outlined in 8.4.
Oh, thank you. I will.
So moved by counsel. Seconded by counsel.
He literally.
Seeing now for the discussion follows in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At the unanimous, go forth, get refurbished.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening and all those online.
Don't go too far. Now 8.5.
My, I might, I might just.
So 8.5, now in the council, gold review.
Can't leave?
With that, no, you can, you can, you can see it easily.
Oh, they don't wanna stay here and listen to us? Be gone.
7:15.
We'll get better.
Sorry.
So hopping back to.
I'm sorry.
So town council goal, we set for 28, reviewing the goals from June 2, and a lot of you again, sounds like great things to you. So Lisa's provided a very thorough update, and I'll let you take it away without explaining any else or anything from that.
Sure. What I tried to do was go through during my time here in the last eight or nine months, as long as it's been, I'm ready to give birth.
Yeah.
I've tried to address as many of your goals as possible. And, you know, there's still more to do. Under number one, with the whole town manager search, you got that accomplished. And, and welcome, Brian, if you're online, I'm not sure, but welcome and congratulations. But what we worked on back in December was the, the goals, but we also tried to put together a strategic planning process based on the current town vision and mission. And I think part of what your goal going forward was to create a new vision and mission, which the new town manager will be responsible for, if that's how you decide to continue with your goals, if you do. So we achieved setting the goals and, and the process with the town's vision and mission by, by doing that. So at this point now, that process will start again. The succession planning, that was another important concern of the town council for employee retention. During the budget process, we and the union negotiation process, which I can't speak publicly about, but we did discuss some ideas of how to try to do that. And hopefully, once the processes start moving forward, we can implement them. But there has been some moving forward in that area. Also, we have some employees currently going for additional training, cross-training within departments. You know, the planning department, the building department, we have some in the finance area. We have several employees who are cross-trained in the finance area to do some things. There's still a lot more to be done. But we're trying to put things in place to help with succession planning. But the biggest issue we have right now is retention. I have some concerns in that area, and that's really something that the next manager will need to work on. There, there is an item in the ARPA subcommittee that we have not moved forward on. It's on our list to talk about possible funding for retention, things like that. So that's another thing that can be discussed in that area if the subcommittee wants to move forward. Identify and execute ARPA funds for capital infrastructure. We have certainly done a lot of that. We, the first payment we made was a small 5,000 or so to the health district to help with COVID battling. We also, although now that we're not moving forward with the miracle field, we did make an attempt to at least put some funding aside for that. Those funds now are released back to the ARPA fund. We purchased, used it for capital equipment for the street sweeper, the.
Backhaul.
Backhaul. And we're also considering other uses for apparatus, fire apparatus, other things. That'll be on there, recreational needs possibly. So there's, there's a lot going on with the subcommittee, but I think we need to decide how we're gonna move forward. When I get, this later on, I'll talk more about that. Regarding the AAA bond rating, certainly, I maintain a very strict debt management plan. I try to be careful on the impact of the budget. Utilized a debt reserve fund, which has helped relieve the impact of debt coming on the books versus what we're actually putting in the budget. That has helped ease it and has also helped us maintain the AAA rating as well as our strong financial practices and policies and management that's in place. We have, we've received one of the highest ratings by standard and force in the country regarding financial management. I'm very proud of that. There, there's not too many communities that get that high of a rating, not only a AAA, but a very high financial rating. So we're doing very well, and we just hope that with the economy and everything that's happening, that we keep it there. We're, so those, you know, we have a very strong fund balance policy. We try to be careful with the amount we've used. The past couple of years, we have used some higher amounts to get us. some higher amounts to get us through, but now we're back down to where we had conservatively have been in the past. The, um, review community services for internal partnerships, I had started a process with the town of Vernon to look at, uh, possible animal control consolidation. Currently, they have pulled out of that negotiation because of, um, situations that they're facing in their community, but we are still, I'm speaking with other towns, Wellington? No, we're not? I thought we were moving with that one too. Well.
We need that service, I mean, it needs to be.
It, we need to move forward with the discussion.
But they're ready, or this one, we have to sit.
Yeah, we just have to make it happen, so that'll be one of the things going forward, but the discussions had begun between both communities. Um, currently, we are already sharing IT services with the town of South Windsor that has worked out wonderfully, as well as the cost. We could never get that type of service by outsourcing it to a private agency or by hiring internally. Because we, you know, we basically are paying for not even the total cost of one person, but we're getting like three or four, depending on the type of needs that we, we have. We don't have all three or four at one time, but we have different talent levels at our disposal. We also have the self-health insurance fund with the Board of Education and Echip. We share services with the Board of Ed where we do all of their grounds maintenance, things like that. Regarding public safety needs, we, we included that in the budget process. We applied for a grant, we're still awaiting to hear if we will, um, receive the grant. It's to help us with, um, to get the EMT staffing up to date and increased, so, you know, so as we hear of it, we will be hiring at least one uh, P S O, Public Safety Officer, and that has been pushed out until November first, unless we get the grant, and then we can start it sooner. What, what needs to be discussed, oh, in addition, in the capital budget, we did include um, the replacement needs for different capital equipment and apparatus in the long-term capital plan, so we're trying to address a lot of those needs going forward. Yeah, what I was gonna say about the fire personnel.
It's a safer grant?
Well, the safer grant moving forward, uh, capital. Sorry, it'll come back to me. Promote sound infrastructure, again, that's the town council and us, and the town manager working together to address our long-term, um, current and long-term capital needs to make sure that our facilities are up to date. And this will all be dependent on future funding within the budget process. Here's some complete, at least two, fire station improvements. We recently went out to bid with, um, for fire stations, three forty and four forty. One forty was, yeah, you might as well come up here, just, just in case. We ended up with six bids, and we were done. And the bad part of this is the lowest bid for stations three forty and four forty came in at close to four point eight million dollars. That's just for two stations, our budget referendum, our, uh, bond referendum for five million dollars for three stations, so we have a situation here, um, and I'm going to offer you alternatives, and certainly it's gonna be up to the town council to decide how you'd like to move forward. I, I am currently authorized to negotiate a contract, well, not negotiate, the, the bids are the bids, but to, um, to sign a contract and award the bid, however, if I do this, it's going to pretty much use up that entire appropriation. And I think three, and one forty is the other piece here, one forty is the station that has the crumbling foundation. We have been monitoring that foundation, there hasn't been any movement in it, so, which is good news. Um, and being told that it's fairly secure, and they feel that it'll be secure for some time. So I think we have time there before anything gets to a point of a safety concern or the building falling down. But there hasn't really been any major changes since it was first identified, which is good news. Um, so what can be done in, in this situation? We, we need to award the bid before July, uh, thirty first. Yeah.
Before the last week of July.
Yeah, it, it needs to be awarded before then, otherwise we lose all the bid process and the cost that we got. Again, with delays in supplies, uh, cost of everything is just, it's just constantly going up. So at least we're locked into these prices, I don't see them coming down after July, we've gone through significant costs already to get these bids in place. A lot of work has been put together to make sure the specs were all together, what it had it really was supposed to include in the original, um, quotes, and I will have a, I, I would like to get a better report together with you, um, for you at a later meeting, but I wanted to bring this to your attention this evening because of the timing of when I would need to award this bid. I just wanna make sure you're all on board with me moving forward, but with that being known, that's pretty much going to use your entire appropriation. Um, there's really nothing that can be cut out. You know, we looked at, you know, can we cut this out, can we cut it, that's just the cost, and the cost is pretty much doubled since we originally planned this, um, with the engineers who specked it all out, but I will, I've asked our engineer to put a report to try to highlight why these increases were in place, and we'll have a better report in a future council meeting. Um, so my recommendation here, and, is to move forward with three forty and four forty, get that going, that'll meet your goal as well. Um, and hopefully, we can have it finished by the end of the, it won't be by June thirtieth, but you know, it's, it's gonna take some time, obviously, to build these buildings and demolish the others. Um, and then with station one forty, since safety seems to be not an issue right now, the council can decide to, to delay it. But, um, pardon me, I'm, I'm doing double duty here. Um, that, that, you can decide to delay it, or and, and do it under a different referendum in another year, there's other options that I, I wanna offer you. The, the one thing that we will have to do, I can still award the contract, but we will have to carve out station one forty as a change in scope in the original bond. Pretty much like what you do with the big school. Um, where you had to, because we had, um, the portables that ended up being a lot more costly than we ever anticipated, um, we had to change the scope and pull those out of the original forty-six million dollars. It would be under the same idea of pulling station one forty out. And then the decision on how to go forward would be up to the manager and council, my input um, as to how to go forward, but the, some of the options that you would have, I know that Representative Nuccio was working on getting a million dollar grant from the state of Connecticut, it still hasn't made it to the bond.
It was approved in the budget, it just hasn't.
Right, it just, it hasn't moved forward, so, you know, and once it moves, so there's a delay with that anyway, but we pl- didn't plan on doing one forty until the other two were completed anyway. So with that in place, you know, there's an option that we could have is that the new estimated cost just for one forty alone is a little over three point two million dollars. Some recommendations, and there's a number of different scenarios you can look at, however, we have to look at trying to fund three point two million, ten thousand dollars. With that, one option is that we have the million dollars, this date, we might be able to apply for a steep grant for another five hundred thousand. That would leave about one million, seven hundred and ten thousand, that would still have to be funded some way, somehow. Now, there's a couple alternatives that you can do, if, if you had to fund that whole one point seven million, you would need to go out for another bond referendum to the entire public. If, because it's a separate project pulled out of the original referendum. So in order to appropriate those funds, because we ha- and, and it, it's all gonna depend on what happens with this other bonding resolution that we do. But that brings us up over the threshold under the charter that gives us a five percent allowance for non-referendum bonding, bonding.
Is that over the five percent?
It is because we're issuing this other debt.
The one we just approved, to go to public hearing?
Right. Um, we have.
So we can know it would be a secondary.
It, it doesn't matter, it's not, it's a cumulative five percent. So once I hit that two point four million dollars, whatever the number is, I, I don't know off the top. Yes, it's like two point four, two point, something like that. Once I hit that number, anything, even if I had to go for a hundred thousand dollar debt issue, would have to go to referendum.
But we wouldn't be here in one forty, it wouldn't be the same year, would it? Are we thinking that we, that you would have to go back out for a bond referendum this year, if you want to do that?
It's, yeah, um, if, if you went, well, I'm trying to stay away from having to go to a bond refer.
Yeah.
Okay, but council may decide that's how you wanna go with. If we had to go for the one point seven million through a bond referendum process, if we did it in this fiscal year, you'd have to add that to what we're already approving in, in July, that'll, that'll make you have to go to a refer. If you decide to use some alternate funding.
Uh huh. ARPA funding, or, or, money at the end of the fiscal year.
Right, whatever.
Yep.
Um, we would not need to go for a full referendum if you kept the bond down to one point two million. So that would mean we would need another five hundred and ten thousand dollars from ARPA funds, or wherever we may have some additional funds left, I would be very careful, I'm not sure how we're going to end this year yet.
You're holding me up.
I know, I am.
So, are, are we gonna have a formal discussion about this?
Absolutely, absolutely, I'm just giving you a, a, a background right now, but I do, this does need to come to a full meeting where you'll be, you know, making resolutions or decisions, I'm just trying to give you some ideas now to keep in mind for the future. So, so there are different ways you can handle this, so if we're gonna get that grant, then it might be worth it to move forward. It, that'll be a discussion for another meeting, but those are some of your options, another option is to say, we're not doing one forty until a few years down the road, when their debt starts falling off the books. Um, so there's a lot of things that can be considered, and, uh, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so I, unless I hear any objections tonight, would like to enter into and award the bid to, um, to the firm. We've checked out references and such. Diversity construction to at least get three forty and four forty going.
This isn't a revolution, we've already passed this at all, already. More verbal consent that this is the plan going forward, knowing that we're likely going to have to carve out one forty.
Right.
As a resolution at a future meeting, probably the first or second.
Right, and I just wanna make sure that there's no issues with me doing that, although I have the authority, I just don't wanna.
You want the good graces of everyone.
Right. I like to be, um, transparent in everything, so that you.
And I know in that vein, transparency, Lisa did inform John, like, right before the meeting, and asked us to, our quick input, but we both, I think, agreed that we wanted to make sure the parent council was okay with it, I think. From our perspectives, we were okay with moving forward three thirty and four forty, as has been laid out, that still is in alignment with the goals. And then, you know, planning, what, a meeting in July to carve out one forty and start talking about long-term, what we would do to address that.
And we just got this information today, so that's.
It's very, it's very fresh.
Can we technically do that? Cause I think that the first, the resolution that passed through referendum was five million dollars for the three fire stations. So what we're saying right now, and I just wanted to confirm, John, these, these two, three, three thirty and four forty, are they still the Morton buildings?
Yeah.
They're, so they're still the same.
It's, it's, it's that terminology, but there's still.
Okay.
They're free.
Right, so the resolution that was designed is five million dollars for three forty, four forty, and one forty.
Right.
Now we have a bid for three forty and four forty, that's gonna be four point eight of the five million dollars that was approved.
Just about, and it could be more.
Right, so do we have to amend that policy before you accept the bid?
No, because the appropriation is in place, and I, I go back to the, the bond resolution did not split out the, the amounts for each facility.
I thought we had that somewhere though, cause wasn't it originally like three point two million, four hundred, one forty, and then it was like one million, one million plus contingency?
Right, but, but the bond resolution itself did not have that, it just said five million for the three stations. Right, so that's where it gives us the authority to use it, but you still have to clean it up and, and, and take one forty out.
I think we definitely need to let the public know, a wholeheartedly, that, you know, the five million dollar approved money is only gonna cover three forty and four forty now, because of the cluster that the world is in.
No, I was thinking, in my initial feedback, Lisa said, we definitely need to make sure the public's aware that those changes and why they're being educated as much as possible. It is very, you know, seconding to a lot of people to see that be approved of, of project and, um, and it's comparable to, to first group and other issues where you group funding, and inflation, and, you know, the war in Ukraine, the steel prices, and every other factor is.
I think we just have a perfect storm, and, and however, the oil prices, everything else affects everything.
Yeah.
So.
That's my very. Oh, and then.
Yeah.
But, cause.
Yeah, um, I know that the building committee for this project, this internal staff, um, we, that building committee has gone through a full value engineering review of this and cut out any and everything that was deemed reasonable. So how much money were you able to save through value engineering?
Basically, they're bare-bones, we'll keep that right now, it's gonna meet the needs of what we, we need. Though, though.
I mean, we're, we're getting paper towels, spencers, and toilet things from BPW, what's left over is not.
Small amount, but they're, they're really, it's to build the building, with the windows and doors.
And was that the original intent, so the originally, the project was specked or estimated at bare bones? And so there is no value engineering, so value engineering came up with no additional savings.
Engineer, can I ask you? So, I mean, engineering did the whole building, the project, I mean, I would think that, you know, for that contract and that thing, that there would be some dating, X, Y, Z, or whatever, that I would end up having to put a couch, or a table, or at least some items in there, but the fire departments had a past history of outfitting all the trains that are, all the other firehouses, so, am I trying to work on that plan now behind the scenes? Yeah, but we're scraping, you know, are there, there's other things that we would love to add back in to the three forty, four forty, because of where, where's the future growth of talent going? I think you're gonna see, a- and regardless of the people that are aligned, but I think you're gonna see regionalization or other towns as we move forth in, in community, large wise, working together, so you could have different people staying X, Y, Z, and that's what, something I'd rather look into, because I like to do things once, and, and make them consistent, so we're building two stations that are standardized, consistent, staffing back and forth, it, it makes the most sense, you know what I'm saying, but there's stuff that, yeah, I mean, we're, 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 we're taking the exhaust system out of the firehouse, moving that over, um, that, that's, I mean, that's fifteen years old, we're taking the to, we're doing everything we can, we're, we gotta unload the other stations to find some storage stuff, to put some of the things in.
That wise though, John, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just, you know, if we're gonna go to the, the, if we have the five million, right? You guys tend to do bare bone stuff all the time.
We get kitchen cabinets out of it.
Why, I know, and I don't, I don't wanna go to like the guy who's repurposing his kitchen to ask for kitchen cabinets for the firehouse, so we haven't seen the plans, like the four point eight, does that include contingency?
It, yes, it does.
Okay.
There's a pretty hefty contingency to depending on, on. It, yes, it does. And there's a pretty hefty contingency depending on on what could happen there. It doesn't include cabinets, includes the uh, the lights for the parking lot and a generator in that number.
I'm just pretty sure that we're gonna be like Pennywise and sound foolish on this, if we're taking like, you know, paper towels, spencers from other places and that for.
I just, I think Councilman, Councilman Muto has some varied points and I, um, from my previous experience, you know, those types of questions are most appropriate at a building committee meeting. Um, so I was, I was, um, get, I was going to the same place you were uh, in that I wanted to know that the building committee had a chance to review the plans to to ensure that the plans do meet the needs of the end users um, and that any opportunity for value engineering has been considered. And we are now at this point, like I, I'm asking for confirmation that that process is.
Chuck went through everything.
Yes, we we did definitely go through everything, make sure what had to be in there wasn't there, that could come out. Um, there wasn't much that could come out. There's still things that the fire chief would love to have. Um, but that, I think, is all dependent on where the project goes, what happens if we find things that come up later on.
I never.
Yeah, I know. Change orders, things like that. Now, just, you you raise a very good point. With station one forty being a different type of project, although value engineering and all that, this design build is still important. I would recommend that station one forty does have a formal building committee. And, um, you know, formally, formal appointed building committee. Whereas that way, everything is in control going forward as far as that, because there's, it's a little bit more involved than how these projects are. But that'll be certainly up to, um, manager of the council, fire. Kill me now, go ahead, but I think it needs to happen.
I agree.
No, I I.
It's different projects at station one forty, I think that needs to be handled from that end of it, but as far as the internal building, I mean, I I got plenty of experts in in the field and, you know, all the ones that are already.
Maybe they're on.
I already texted my department, I got other ones that have built a prior firehouse, they know where we, you know, designed, so there's a lot of internal stuff that we got.
And citizens can be on the.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, so these could be people that get appointed. Anyway, that's, that's not right now anymore. I'm just trying to get you up to speed as to what's happening, and I don't know, are there any other questions?
I think that's off your hand, I think. But yeah, I don't wanna, I know we're kind of halfway through some of the goals.
Yeah, I know.
I know this is one that you wanted to bring up, even the management board or a shit's white, so this is probably.
I think I'll try to just turn these very quickly, unless you don't want me to, but please.
Yeah, I'm gonna hold up my questions, uh, next name to talk about three, I did, I'll try. I have a million other questions about bid process, so.
Yeah, so I would say, you know, you've got a suitable update so far and more to come.
Okay, right.
So we can move on to the remaining goals.
Okay, so I ju- I just wanna get a feel that you're all comfortable with me moving forward with the award.
I I I need to make a straw poll if necessary. I think that we won't have so far, it's something that we can go forward with. You know, unless there's any strenuous objection by any, by any council member, I think it's something that we need to move on. And that, you know, that we can discuss this to the nth degree, but I think that, you know, that this is something that it's time to move on. And so I think that, you know, I I'd be ready to go forward with it, give it, you know, give just send it out the, the blessing.
But the rest of the motion, me and my Lou is our second to possibly do a straw poll, just to give Lisa good graces on moving forward with three thirty and four forty.
Would we have to add that to our agenda? Because this is not, and I'm.
No, we're doing a straw poll, it's just, yeah, this is all, you have the authority, you just want to have it in the record that we.
I just wanna make sure that you're comfortable. My concern is we've spent a lot of money already, a lot of time and effort has gone in, and the prices are probably only going to go higher, so, yes.
I guess I then then do another question, for them to talk about, are just going higher, I mean, are we gonna get into a situation that is actually gonna be more and then we don't have enough money to cover it? I mean.
Yeah, if we go past the, um, the award process timeline, then, yeah, we'll lose the bids and we'll have to start.
I mean, if you accept the bid and three weeks later, I mean, is that?
Oh, no.
We accept issues where.
No, no, once the bids come in, the the bidders are required to.
Basically, we have the bid, then.
Yeah, once you award the bid, that's it, they're locked into it.
Yeah.
When we get the performance contrast, all that going with them to make sure that they follow through, but.
Unless it's unforeseen.
Yeah, I mean, there could be change orders.
Come back for a change order.
Yeah.
I guess that's where I'm concerned, but what happens if those come back to me?
The the price that they locked in for the cost of doing the project, for everything that is in that bid, is what they have to charge us to do it. Now, if something comes about where they need to put in another wall that was never there or something like that, which I don't think is gonna happen, because we've moved walls many times in this whole process. But, you know, something that was not in the original specifications, then that would require a change order, and that certainly could raise the cost of the contract. We do have money built in to this four point eight million dollars that I'm talking about to cover some potential changes that could happen along the way, but price increases, things like that, that, um, they can't raise the price for things that are already in the award. That would be award, but I need to award it to make sure that it's secured and that happens.
Any other questions?
What's the contingency amount on this project?
Four hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred dollars.
So ten percent? So the four point, four point ten million dollar project, and you're running it at less than ten percent contingency? What's the reason it's so low?
Are you talking about the contingencies?
Yeah.
Yeah, four hundred and twenty-four six. Originally, the that was based on the the the.
Yeah, we still, we still have some contingency that what we had, we broke out the budget for one forty, and there's some contingency in that, we'll then over to this.
But it's only, but it's less than two hundred thousand dollars. So we're still talking about well under fifteen percent contingency in a relatively volatile and unknown market.
Yeah, you'd have about over two hundred thousand dollars extra. If you did the whole, the whole five million that's there, the the difference between the four point seven eight four, three seventy seven, whatever it is, um, that difference would be added to the contingency, which would be another couple hundred thousand, little over a couple hundred thousand. And, um, so you'd have, say, six fifty, six seventy.
And what's the market practice for contingency on three bu- buildings?
Usually twenty percent.
So we're not, we're not close to that yet, and we have an incredibly volatile market that we're working in. I think, uh.
Well, that's where I think, Katie, that's why I'm saying like the bond is up to five million.
Right, but she'll say.
Buildings are four point eight and we've got.
Well, the four point eight includes.
Includes the contingency, right, that you just talked about, so we will still have two hundred thousand.
Right, but including that, we would be we'd only have a contingency amount of
About six hundred.
Six hundred thousand.
Well, plus there's another seventy, almost seventy-three thousand for bonding legal costs, which, um.
We're gonna weigh those? That would be awesome, thank you.
We might. I didn't say we are, I said we might. Depending on where we're going with things. You know, if I can get a good bond premium to come in at the sale of the bonds when they are sold, then I can use those for the legal, I have to use those for the legal costs.
Yeah.
And that didn't happen to, um, for twelve.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, so, you know, certainly there, I mean, there's a high likelihood that you'd have another seventy-two thousand dollars besides the two twenty, so say three hundred and seven, about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand amount of contingency.
We're still looking at the, um, at alternate, they said that total was two hundred thousand. Whether, you know, so maybe we just kind of start looking at all the numbers too.
That's all in that.
Yeah, I know, but we're just making sure that we're gonna accept them all.
Oh, yeah.
That's assuming you're gonna accept all the adults.
That's, that's including everything.
Then you need all those adults?
Their kitchen cabinets, lights for the parking lot and agenda.
Oh, okay, so yes, you need those. So you're, you're telling us that, and you're asking for us to informally approve a project where you're carrying less than fifteen percent contingency? Fourteen point five percent is what you came up with? Yeah, that's, that's very troubling.
And I don't know, we have much of a choice though, because the bond referendum is only for five. We don't, we can't go over what it's.
I can't go over that.
Yeah, but even worse to start a project and not be able to finish it, because you don't have enough money. Not always, house more.
Well, I think that's where, that's where the bids are in place, and we're locking in, those are concerns, and how to check out better answers, so.
Sure, I.
Yeah.
But having just been through a big project, yeah.
But this isn't.
I think the one really big difference though, Katie, though with Virg Grove was so much material, different material used in the school, whereas the Morton buildings are the building itself is everywhere.
Yeah.
Free to add, so, if they lock in the Morton buildings at the price, then
How much of that site?
Really is the risk?
What's the site, what's the site amount on that project?
They should all be included in the bid.
So I I can I, I know, and I'm sorry, and all these details I know would normally be handled at the building committee level. It just, if he, something feels, thi- this feels a little bit shaky to me, that's all.
Well, obviously, I never even get a chance to even go through all that stuff, because I got major stuff that's on my plate.
Sure.
And driving trucks today, but I didn't even get a chance to go through the rest of it.
Yeah.
For the bid alternates or even look at it. Chuck, the engineer, went through
Yeah.
The five different bidders.
Yeah.
And scrutinized it with his engineer. Um, but there's, this this whole project since day one has been.
Hmm, yeah.
I I'll be damned, I mean, it's like, I mean, my, our concern from the fire department ended, if I can speak freely, Lisa?
Make it quick.
We'll meet at a spot.
Um, so does that mean that the spec reviews are finished as well, and we're sure that these specs will meet? Like, these specs have all been reviewed to make sure they meet the needs and the outline of the project, so the low bid does act, they're actually gonna do what you want them to do?
Yeah, and it's, it's a serviceable building, maybe bare bones is a little bit.
No, I I've heard, I've heard.
We're not looking for the tightrope hall.
No, I.
We're looking for a functional building.
Absolutely, I'm just, yeah.
I mean, we reviewed, obviously, we reviewed site, we reviewed preceptive, we, you know, the water system. We went to IT, we made sure, you know, having watched the first round.
Yeah.
It's like.
Yeah.
So i- it is kind of difficult to say in this, this world. I don't know if the contractor will say, I can't get a piece of equipment or something for six months. So I I get what you're saying about the contingency, it makes you a little uncomfortable. Um, because.
Need about, we just don't.
Yeah.
So we we'd have about seven hundred and twenty versus nine sixty.
Yeah, it's fourteen point five percent contingency, if you use every available line.
Yeah.
Into contingency.
So I just wanna pass back for a quick second, I see Councilman Lou's hands up, but I also wanna make sure, before we kind of went from the regularity again of the projects, the initial request for Councilman Lou with the straw poll as to whether we're okay with Lisa moving forward with executing the bid that we're provided. But Councilman, do you have anything?
Well, yeah, I mean, just, you know, I understand exactly what Mr. Murray's talking about, I mean, we're on the building committee together for Virg Grove. And I was one that was always hammering home on the issue of making sure we do our due diligence, but I also have to think that I I think the biggest issue here is the magnitude of scale. That the Virg Grove buil- the Virg Grove building was ten times more and much more involved than what this is. And so while I understand and I appreciate the concerns regarding due diligence, I believe, I have faith in what, what the building committee here has presented, especially given the fact that this probably was, was on the committee with us, went through it, knows all the pain and suffering that we went through. And so I I feel comfortable going forward with this, uh, and that's why I think that, uh, that I would still stand by my request to go forward, straw straw poll, uh, to have the authorization to go forward with this.
Councilman Muto, then comment your question.
Um, I literally just talked to Johnny Doff the other day, so I'm working on, if we get that million dollars dispersed, he's swearing to God, it's gonna be, so if we get that million dollars dispersed, that then becomes part of the money that's available, rather than, I know the original intent with the fire department, when it was the three at five million, we got the million dollar bond, we're gonna only end up funding four and using the million from the, um, the state fund, but now that it's it is what it is, we have that, with that extra million come into play, and I guess, how will we, if we get the million from the state, I know there's certain, we're, we're reporting requirements and stuff like that. Um, but how does that factor in with the five million? Does that then give us obviously more wiggle room?
I don't know, because the bond resolution states that any bonding issued would be offset by any grants received. So.
So the million dollars.
And the thing is, we, the reason why we held off on one forty, part of the reason was because of that grant, because there's different processes. I mean, we're, we're following all the prevailing ways and everything else. But you have to make sure you have all the steps in place when it comes to state funding.
So the intent is still that we're gonna use the million for one forty?
Yes, unless, uh, at a future council meeting, it's decided not to, but if that's the case, then we would have to go back and look at everything that we did through the bid process, everything that we did here.
To make sure it means.
And then we would only issue four million and.
Okay. So it makes more sense to use it to offset one.
Well, especially since one forty is now three point something.
And that the bonding resolution that was in the budget was just a million dollars for the fire station repair and replacement. So it didn't, the actual budget language didn't specify three forty, four forty and one forty, it was just a million dollars for Talon Fire Station repair and replacement. So we should be able to use it for any of the.
Right, that was the plan, we wanted to keep that as a separate project.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I wonder if Councilman Lou might be willing to revise his, um, motion to see if we have a straw poll, see if anyone is against moving forward, since uh, she already has permission to move forward, maybe we should straw poll whether we would object to her doing something she's already been approved to do.
Then I'll, I'll, I'll accept that suggestion, but, uh, but this Maria, amend my motion for a straw poll to see if there's anyone that objects to the, uh, to moving forward.
Right, and I will second that.
All right. So. We'll prove that straw poll, so I guess, you know, from here, is there anyone that would like to raise their hand in objections that are allowing us to move forward? Right, there's a.
Yeah, great, you got it.
Basically, is there anyone who's very, very much against letting Lisa just move forward? That was basically what.
Right, yeah. That is crazy.
I know.
I don't know, I, I might get you, just. No, all good.
You two are not making my last meeting easy, are you?
We just.
Ah, no, I understand.
Yeah, no, so there's, so there's no clear objection, now they're just having a reason.
Okay, then I am forwarding, moving forward, let's get through this goal.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, I'm ju-.
Crumbling foundations.
Crumbling foundations, we had help, we did it, good. All right, the next one. Steve Wargner did a lot of work, even though it wasn't your goals back then, he did a tremendous amount of work uh, for this town in moving forward with the insurance program, everything else, our count, our representatives at the state also moved forward legislation. I know currently there was even more recent legislation put in place, so it has been ongoing. I know Representative Muto was involved with some of that, so that goal has been met and is constantly moving forward. We also got things on our website to try to keep the public up to date as to where we're at. New renovations coming back on our grand list. Okay, the well. Okay, the well water concerns, um, again, I'm sure we'll have a future meeting on this going forward, um. I have personally worked with the state, our state representative, senators, U S congressmen and senators. I've reached out just to about everybody I can, um, and I have received responses. But I think at this point, it's something now, uh, going forward, that, uh, Brian will, our new town manager, will need to move forward, I will have to bring him up to speed with what I've got so far, to see where we're going, and at that point, we will have to decide. And I know that was one of his goals, was to, to deal with the, uh, well water concerns of, of the community. So, um, you know, I could share what I have so far with him, working on different alternatives, we have put the the loan application in place, still have not heard anything yet regarding that, but, you know, we are making movement in that area. Um, certainly will be a council decision going forward with the Water Commission, actually. To work on this. ADA accessibility, we, um, I recently hired a historic architectural landscaper that will be at your June twenty ninth meeting to come back with results, hopefully, we will have some sort of alternative regarding the historic district and sidewalks. Also, other ADA improvements, I was able to purchase what is called a grass mat, uh, again, today I got another positive uh, compliment regarding that mat and what it has helped with the community, although it was a small initiative, it gave us something in the interim to try to adjust ADA accessibility on the green. Um, also, I'm looking at a, uh, contract for looking at all of our other parks and recreational areas, town facilities as for ADA access there, and that cert- that, uh, engineering review will be forthcoming to try to see what we can do there, and then possibly maybe have to recommend use of ARPA funds or future capital, whatever it is, to make ADA updates, but.
Just wanna add really quick to that grass mat, the story, I think I heard of getting that up here, I think in time, it was the hardest best, or another, that was really astounding, so I just wanna give kudos to Public Works and the town, the donors that really make that happen.
Yes, there were several, um, and I don't have the list right now, but several people from the community that helped donate towards that, as well as, um, Public Works really went over and beyond, and thank you for reminding me of that. Uh, additionally, um, there's a Girl Scout troop that is looking at these other areas of, um, concern, and we're gonna have them work together with our consultant to see what kind of things they come up with as well. Collaborate with the Recreation Advisory Board for recreational opportunities. We've, we've worked together on various recreational opportunities for, um, Miracle Lake. Unfortunately, that didn't pan out, but there was still a, a significant effort there, and, um, the end result was what was in the best interest of the town. Um, we're also implementing a new part-time position in the Recreation Department to try to improve all the recreational programming for the town, and hopefully that will be self-sufficient in the future.
Let me just run a quick, because it's in the polls, it's.
I mean. I'm just pointing in that, I mean, I think it is a paper, so the council made a decision, we just got a decision, that was leadership. And I think it was a unilateral decision, I mean, we might come to the same decision at a council meeting, but that's just my personal, so. Disciplined on how leadership, leadership came to that. I feel like the council was left out of that decision.
Okay. Engage the citizens in re- for better commitment, um, community, balance among open space residential economic development, um, one of the things that I did through my position was I worked with the Economic Development and Planning, uh, Economic Development Commission and Planning Staff to prepare an inventory of our, all our open commercial space. They did a fantastic job in the planning department, developing an interactive mapping system of all these properties, which not only show what is available for commercial, um, businesses to rent, buy, whatever. But it also shows what type of businesses are zoned, um, what the utilities are, and, and things like that. The, the next piece that I had planned to do, it'll be up to the manager to decide if he wants to do that, is to, um, now bring in either real estate developers, contractors, um, real estate agents to market those properties to them, to bring them on maybe a little tour of certain areas that we might wanna try to focus on, to drive up the interest in that, those locations, to try to get some of those locations built. So, that, that was going to be the next step, maybe also working with, um, other entities to make that happen, to attract those developers, I also worked with, um, other developers in town in a few other areas, in addition, um, I had been working with the Santini developers, who are going in behind Big Y, and, um, what we're looking at is revising some sewer regulations for the good of all development in the town, not just their development, as well as, uh, we will be reviewing the various planning fees, uh, to make it affordable for more developers to try to come into town to promote development, so that was some of the initiatives that I started moving forward on. The, um, affordable housing, that is another, um, product forthcoming. And the, um, we do have a policy put together, and, uh, we're just waiting to bring that forward on a future agenda. So, we have, and the, the goal is to work collaboratively with the, um, planning and zoning mission to yeah, make something that'll work for everyone.
And I did wanna make a quick note that, uh, the Chair of the Mission reached out to me yesterday afternoon that they pushed back the requirement for January twenty three, so they're hoping to schedule at some point in the near future, so we're staying in touch, and I'm hoping John, the vice chair, Regan on it, so hopefully with that work, maybe with the next town manager to have follow-up joint meeting with them about moving the policy forward, in a way that is beneficial to everyone's concern that were raised at the first meeting.
And there'll be a lot of bringing Brian up to speed on a lot of these topics, I have a lot of folders, with a lot of paper in.
Yeah.
And there's a lot here, so, um, okay, so, so that was one of the other things, the, um, more community involvement in, in the budget process, certainly we've through all different social media, websites, um, advertising, things like that, we've tried to get involvement, in the past, we've done, um, community, small community meetings, we didn't get much of a turnout at those, well, we did try to get input. Um, one of the other things that I'm working on with the town administrator from the town of Vernon is putting some educational series together, video education programs, that I, I shared the first one that was put together, um, and we just did another one on the, and how good values are assessed, and our assessor was involved in that, and there'll be some others forthcoming, to at least try to get some education out there to the public, maybe there's more we can do in the future. Mental health task force, they continue to provide recommendations for the mental health community needs, the ARPA Subcommittee is already, um, focused on wanting to provide funding once we come forward with, um, there's, I know there's additional reviews that's taking place on the committee level, and I'm not sure what the update is on that yet, but they were looking at various alternatives for providing the additional services to the town, and the ARPA Subcommittee did support bringing it forward when it was time, unless.
We don't have, we don't have.
We don't have any back yet, so that, that still needs to happen.
And I just don't think that I have, you already touched upon it, I know, leave it the last report from that task force, the rec assistant position that was passed in the budget was a part of their goals, or was something that they felt was in alignment with their concerns of having recreation program for everybody in town, that's kind of diversion from substance use and mental health issues.
We're gonna have a, I'm sorry, we're gonna have a update soon with the Subcommittee, I mean, it seems like it's been dragged on.
Yeah, there is one major, I need to know when we do.
I mean, not to a mental health task force, I mean. Right, I mean, there's been, I feel like we're getting behind, because they keep coming up with these fabulous ideas, they work, it's a great mental health courses, great, but they don't wanna get so far behind that we're trying to catch up on their first.
But we, we need them to determine which way they wanna go, and, you know, I.
I mean, there's a list, I would think that, that, I think.
Right, I think some of their goals have been changing, and they've been doing different ideas at each meeting, so.
Yeah, maybe they do. The, the task force maybe needs to prioritize, and, uh, maybe, maybe take a look back, some of the other things that came out, this is what we wanted first, this is what we'd like to see, and second, that sort of thing, maybe. Maybe that would be a direction to talk to, to share about.
I thought that, I thought what was, we were already, we were just looking at what was already in the ARPA Subcommittee, which was the request for the mental health, they're not to, like they didn't learn it, so, has that changed? Because I don't remember being told that that changed.
I, I think it does.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't been, once again, attending the meetings, we didn't even have the more rate or much, but I thought that's where we were moving forward, and then there was kind of a shift in the philosophy with the group wanted to do, and.
So, I'm not sure the. As far as, this, uh, cause we had a, a presentation from two different, um, entities, so I'm not sure where that sits right now, to be honest with you.
I think that it was Hockenum Valley, but then it was the Village, right? I think it was thought by human res- human. Human services. Yeah, I, I thought that they.
And they were two different.
They didn't think that Hockenum Valley could provide the services that they'll develop.
Correct.
That's what I mean, I believe so, or they hadn't gotten back, maybe we should just, uh, it's more random, I have a meeting coming up.
I think we need to have them.
Yeah, I think we need a refresh around that, because I wasn't aware of all this other stuff that was happening, I thought it was just, we were waiting to get the contract from Hockenum Valley on what they were gonna provide, which. And now we're talking, I'm totally confused.
Well, they were, they were going to talk about the village.
The village came on and then that.
Right, and to determine if those would provide additional or other services that were going to be required for what they were asking for, and I don't know where that ended up, if they were going to need both entities, or just about.
Yeah, say again, like, this is nothing that we talked about, I thought you were just marrying what Vernon did. To put to the mental health thing, where, yeah, us apart.
Yeah, so, it was, she said that she was gonna bring it to the town, and we're supposed to village, and that was. All right, that worried. Like, so. Now, it was. But maybe John's right, that we need to mention prioritize again, and then bring it back. So, I'm just.
Well, yeah, but it sounded the recommendations changed, it's changed a little bit.
Yeah, we need to have a definitive recommendation as to how they would like to proceed, and then we could fund it. But, but we'll bring it to the council to approve the funding, but, um, yeah, I know there were different recommendations out there. The concern was that possibly. Okay, the concern was that possibly Hockenum Valley would not be able to provide all the services to meet the needs that they were looking for. So, that's, we just need to find out.
Yeah.
What they need, what they want, and then we go through them.
Yeah. They'll do that.
Cool.
Together.
Okay, we're, all right, can I go first?
Yes.
And if we're on the last one. Provide an opportunity for increased community engagement, and advocate at the state level um, statutes that will allow us to continue remote meetings in the future, and the state legislature did approve the statute to continue the use of remote and hybrid meetings. So, that's what we're doing. That's, that's what we've accomplished so far, I think we've hit on just about, actually, every one of your goals. Maybe not in entirety, but at least I made an attempt to try.
You don't try that.
Yeah, at least address them in some way or another, and there's still a lot more work to do.
That's been an incredible effort, thank you.
Oh, wow, thank you, you're welcome. Okay.
All right, there's no other discussion on the goal, we can move to item eight point six, which was a consideration for a resolution to amend chapter A one seven six dash six of the Town Code Policy number six, which is the town green by groups of organizations. And I know there was a communication with Counsel Luba that was forwarded on, I think, to the rest of the council for a couple of the other minutes, and there was a breakdown of the July twenty eighth meeting, as well, that includes the discussion for a point of reference, for anyone that needs it, as to some of the recommendations and modifications that are.
July.
Here.
Well, July twenty eighth of twenty twenty, and September twenty second, twenty twenty, we've provided you with just the pieces out of those minutes that related to this particular output. Um, what we tried to do was to go back to all those minutes, go back to prior documentation, because there had been discussions around what, um, the council at that time wanted to see and not see, and and, uh, I think Counsel Luba also made an effort to try to get it all documented, we took everything between what um, Michael, Michael Rosen had, what the minutes had, and what Counsel Luba had provided and tried to get it into one concise document for you to review this evening. The major changes or modifications from the initial plan to the revised plan are, are listed here, which basically is to clarify the purpose of the policy, because there was a lot of concern about who can use the green, who can't, and, you know, is it an organized event, or someone out there just playing, playing catch, you know? And, and those were some big concerns, so the purpose of the policy tries to, uh, identify what an event is, and things like that, or the purpose of the policy identifies it, but the, the item, there's more definitions within the policy. Um, it lessened the amount of time to apply to use the green, where it had to be several weeks in advance, where now it's down to one week, I know we had talked, it had, uh, there was discussion on two days. Maybe it was two days. I'm sorry, I don't, I worked on this last week. In any event, it changes the timing from the original.
It was originally three weeks and now one.
Right, that's right, okay, and the only time it would be anything longer than one week, more likely to turn around very quick. But anytime it would be more than one week, is if it falls into something where we have to bring it to the town council to approve it, which, you know, would mean getting it on an agenda that can take longer than a week, to make that happen. So, it lessened the amount of time, so that we can, um, and, and provides information on how to submit the application for the town manager, so in a more efficient manner of how to do that, it's also online, the information will all be there online for them to access. It identifies the agencies and organizations allowed to use the green. Um, updates the governmental structure from board selection to town council, that was a minor revision. Um, for, for waivers for allowing additional groups or organizations to use the green, who are not identified explicitly in the policy. So, it, that, that decision would come to the town council, to, if they were not already in the policy of who would be allowed to use the green. Then it would be, it would continue to be a decision. Um, allowance for organizations, including the farmer's market to park on the town green with the authorization of the town manager. The ability of the town manager to waive the requirement for an, an insurance certificate with the event. The ability of the town manager to waive the requirement for an insurance certificate with the event organizer to sign for acceptance of liability, that was we did have all the insurance requirements reviewed with our insurance agent of record. And he felt comfortable with the amounts that are included for the requirement and suggested that if, you know, if they were to get it waived, then they would have to have a waiver themselves of assuming liability and so forth. Um, allowance for waivers by the town manager in order to make the process more efficient, so it just gives, um, most of the waivers and allowances i- in the authority of the town manager to do, except for the, the ones that are explicitly accepted that have to be approved by the town council, but it just makes the process to get it approved a little more efficient, clarified, and easier to use, I, I.
Thank you, Lisa, I do appreciate the way this is laid out, I think it, it was relatively clear that as you go through the packet, first page is the proposed policy and second page is obviously the current policy, but I don't think, or any questions from council members? Any concern with the way it was laid out, or any questions on the direction that Lisa kind of took from our past meeting in last term?
Well, I think, Mr. Chair, I think this pretty, I mean, very well captures the discussion that we previously had on this. All the concerns that were previously voiced in the prior meetings, and I think that it's something that I, I think it's great. I think it's something that is very sound, and I would, I would ask that the council support it, I think it addresses all the concerns. And I think that the one best thing about it is that for people that have concerns, the last time about people that might not fit an organized group that this mainly aimed at, that, that section D there, uh, uh, pretty much states it as well, saying that people could use it, but then they assume the liability. So, I, I think that this adequately captures everything that we discussed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Luba, are there any other questions?
I, I'd just like to share my sentiments as the Council did, I thought this was very well gathered, thank you for organizing all of that. As someone who didn't have quite the same background on the council, um, giving us all this information, that's why it was very, very helpful, so thank you.
You're welcome, sorry, didn't come through, first time.
Okay.
Yeah. This is great, so thank you.
You're welcome, I do want to say, I want to give a special thanks to Megan Masah in my office. She did a lot of work in trying to get everything together, employing this together, she got a lot of it put into a draft document where I then went in and made a few changes, but she did a lot of work on this. Also, David Corcoran provided a little bit of input as well, so I do want to thank them for all their hard work in, in putting this together.
Just as a point of procedural question, amendments to town code, uh, don't have to go to public hearing, right, we're just
Not just policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
There is.
And then just one other thing, I know that this is specifically brought up by the farmer's market and their concerns, but I think that, that if this does end up passing since I don't think that they would fall under the provisions of other, of one or two under subsection B in this that we could then take action and pass a resolution allowing them under the subsection B three, uh, if we deem they're appropriate.
They're not, not for profit group within the town?
That's what I thought, I thought they were not.
Oh, they are, okay, when I said recognize.
Yeah, there are.
Oh, good then, now then, just ignore what I said, let's just go.
No worries.
They've used the green before, so it just got moved.
Okay.
For a while, but, um.
Seeing all the discussions in the game.
They, you know, Megan is a rock star, so, you know, thank you for going back and, and pulling all of the craziness there, so I, I appreciate what she does, she.
Thank you, she is a tremendous asset. So, her and Lynn, Lynn does a lot as well, but Megan really, um, really helped me a lot with getting all this pulled together, because there was a lot of different research that we had to find and files that are very difficult to find, but we, we got them, she got them, and hopefully together, so I can't thank her enough.
I think that gives me sympathy, like, was the Jim packing, because that's where Megan came from, she was from the building permit office, so. Hopefully Jim isn't still sour from that, but let him know that she's not too far away, she's done a phenomenal job moving up her career, so.
I wish I could take a week.
All right, there's no discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution outline eight point six.
Almost.
So, my councilman Murray, is there a second? Second to my councilman, you can check. Seeing other discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, as unanimous, thank you, everyone. Eight point seven, we have one appointment to the boards and commission, I'm sorry.
No, nothing.
Okay. We have one appointment to the Parks and Rec Board for Jim Leahy for a term of six, fourteen twenty two to eleven five twenty five, so if you can, a motion to approve that appointment.
I'm making that motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Second to Council Luba, any discussion, I'm just saying, if I.
And I just, that this is a man that, uh, that Council Khan and I did discuss, that we feel that, uh, Mr. Leahy, although there was a number of applicants that put into this position, all of them, all of them very qualified, that, uh, that he just had qualifications that we thought were above the, and then it was, well, again, uh, I'm happy to see that we have people, number of, like, multiple people applying for positions. Um, and I would just encourage anyone who was not selected to please consider other positions or alternate positions. I, I would probably endorse this, uh, this position, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Our councilman, you two have any other texts?
Is, so the, on the front page, it says there's one vacancy, so Jim filled in that one vacancy, or is there one vacancy after we put Jim on?
They're filling in with that one vacancy.
They're filling the one?
Yeah.
Okay, I would just like to say, I've known Jim Leahy for as long as I've lived in this town. He's a high school boy soccer coach, he's a Hall of Fame, um, dedicated Hall of Fame soccer coach. Uh, if he's been involved, he was president or vice president, when I was on, we were both on the college soccer board together. When it comes to recreation and kids, um, I appreciate everybody who, who applied for that, but Jim just kind of stands out a little bit head and shoulders and other people, and I think he's going to be an amazing asset on the Parks and Rec Board, so, yeah, highly endorse him.
For the ones that, thank you to everybody that applied, um, interested in any of our available vacancies. I was gonna say, are we gonna send thank yous or to people, because I know we're gonna email that.
There was one mix up and we apologize to.
I, I know you did, I just wanted to make sure it doesn't happen again.
We always put different procedures in place to make sure it doesn't happen.
Yeah, and I know, I mean, this is something that we've been battling with for, uh, throughout the inception, where it's difficult so they're actually, the person's actually approved by the county. We don't, it, it's our general policy not to notify anybody, because we don't know, say if we make this proposal, the person does get approved.
I mean, after, we know.
Oh, yeah, af- afterwards, then, then, after the council, they're actually, yes, then, then we'll make sure that the notification is sent out. Yeah, okay.
And then, if I have a, sorry, is that, can you answer?
No, I was saying, thank you.
Can I ask you another question?
Just, we, I know we have the two letters of resignation from the, um, the housing authority. Are those in here, because this, the housing authority, that is only one vacancy right now. And then there's the town nonprofit housing corporation, so I don't know if it's one from one and one from the other? Are the two resignations?
I think for the Old Coast Village, I think one of the resignation right immediate, so it's the first opening, and the other is just not seeking a term, so I'm one for terms. All right, and I think that's.
So, it'll be two.
So, it'll eventually.
It's only one right now.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
I'm gonna say, I do, I'm, I'm just gonna say really quickly that I, I compared everyone's comments, that it's very difficult to think of youth soccer without thinking of Jim Leahy and a lot of the things he's done in this community, I think he was a very eligible part of the, uh, Blackfield High School, so. Town, so, I welcome on board, I think he's extremely qualified and will be a great asset for the recreation board.
He's gonna grab his present.
All right, if there's no other discussion, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, I think that is unanimous. And then just do one thing, those who are resigning or not seeking another term for their service, and again, you're very capable to get out there and visit vacancies at townctd dot field to apply for any of these positions. Moving on to old business we've had, you know?
I just wanted to say here, if I may, I was disappointed to see that an update on Miracle Field wasn't included in our old business.
Okay, thank you. I'm returning is the report of the temporary term engine.
I was going to update you on the Miracle Field, awesome. First of all, I, I would like, before I, I finish any other updates, I've updated you on the firehouses, so that was going to be in there, but addressed the many goals. I just want to say thank you to you all, it's been my pleasure serving town for the last almost nine months. We've come a long way with a little bit of time, and I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. Now, the Miracle Field. A lot of work went into taking in everybody's considerations for the, for the content, and I, I pulled together and discussed with Mr. and Mrs. Lee Woodson, my client representatives of Miracle Field. Everything that was being requested, and some of the things we were able to negotiate, and others, they were just not going to happen. And at that point, my intention was to bring it back to the council to talk about at what level do you want to go or not go with this, because there was no way we could get, um, them to replace the field in perpetuity, that was one of the major requests for the, for the negotiations. The other portion was to have them paying one hundred percent of the maintenance fees of, of the field, which there, there really wasn't a lot of maintenance fees, but they were willing to pay for the time that they used it, but felt that the town should pay for the time that we were using it, the Board of Education had concerns that since it was on board of it, um, let me get back to why it was back on board of education property. The Miracle Field group went out and looked at the location that, that was recommended at Birch Grove Field. Um, also, uh, our staff went out to look at it and the cost involved of moving the shed, the water lines, everything that was there to try to get them on a more level playing field to build that field over at Cross Farms. Would have been much more costly than to take the alternative of moving it back to Birch Grove in the area that was recommended by the gentleman, I forgot his name. David Garrett, right, um, it, it was a better alternative to move it into that spot on Birch Grove, but not touch the soccer fields, that would make us have to relocate the soccer leagues, so it, it would have meant the per, meant the purpose of what they needed, but they needed the clearing area. We had talked about, um, allowing ARPA funds to be used to assist with that, because it really wasn't something that they had planned on paying for when they initially proposed the project, I think you were all on board with that. I know you were all on board on wanting to have the field here, but there were also concerns on what it would cost the taxpayers in the future. So, with all those concerns, we discussed it and it came to a point where, you know, liabilities, as far as, you know, what if they did not replace the field, who would be liable for it, who would pay for it, who would, who would you sue, or what would you do, there could have been so many other impacts on if they, if they didn't pay to replace the field, then, okay, well, the result is, you, you just don't allow them to play on a field that they paid for. Politically, publicly, that probably wouldn't have sat well with the community, I would think, maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't. That, that wasn't up to me to decide, but these were some of the concerns that were shared by the individuals who were involved in the process. My, my goal was to try to get a contract that I could bring forward to council that would be acceptable. When I got to the point where I knew it wasn't going to be everything that you all wanted, I went to leadership and asked them, you know, let's have a meeting to talk about it and figure out what we want to do. I asked them, and maybe it wasn't the right thing, but I asked them to each reach out to their caucuses because you couldn't have a meeting last minute like that. Um, because we, we had to try to have a decision by the following week, they were trying to get it done before the end of, uh, May. My understanding is that the chair and vice chair did reach out, I think.
Well, no, we, we had, we were asked to reach out about having a meeting, and then we had to discuss it, and then after, it was once we made the decision, we reached out to caucuses.
Okay, well, I misunderstood that.
Yeah.
So, um, at that meeting, I was just looking for a direction on how they wanted me to move forward with, or without the contract, and it was felt that the most important things that were desired in the contract were not going to be agreed upon by Miracle League, and at that point, I was told that it was best to let them move on with another alternative that they had. So, that's what happened, I certainly was in support of it, but I understand the, the priorities that were being requested, or the, the, the requirements that were requested as part of it. Did I say it right, or did I say anything?
So, I, you know, and, and from my perspective, we asked the town attorney to come back with a contract that would be agreeable, so he was unable to do that.
Right.
So, we had nothing to come back to the town council with. He got, Rick Conti got the memorandum of understanding from Eastline. His, his exact word, word, this was something, this is something I would never sign, that's exactly what he said.
Yes, that is correct.
That's exactly what he said, and, and to me, that was, that was enough, he could not produce something that was, that, that he would sign
Right.
as our town attorney, or that we would sign, he was unable to do that, so to me, it wasn't a decision that Steve and I made, it was we had nothing to bring back, because he was unable to, to, uh, provide a contract that was something that, that we need to sign.
Yes, thank you, and I just, a question for these hand cockies, was it something that would, uh, were they even willing to consider signing a binding contract? Or are they still stuck with the MOU like they were presenting previously?
I think we probably could have got them to negotiate signing a contract. Unfortunately, they wanted an MOU, but they understood the need for a more formalized process. The concern that they would never sign would be being held personally liable um, to replace that field after, they, they were committing to replacing it one time through fundraising. Now, if they didn't do the fundraising, the ramifications, you know, what, what would the town do? There were a lot of concerns then, there were concerns from the Board of Education that, well, now that it's on school property, are we going to have to pay to replace that field, are we going to have to pay to maintain it? And they.
Similar to like the football field that we have right now.
Exactly. So, the, you know, their concerns were being heard as well. And you know, we, we could not guarantee that that field would be replaced, I mean, they were certainly making a commitment upfront. Fifty thousand dollars deposited right away into a trust fund, certainly, um, the field replacement would be much more than that, but they felt that they would be able to commit to replacing at least one field, but not to do it in perpetuity, which is maybe what everyone understood it to be in the beginning. And that was not going to budge. And that was not going to budge.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. General.
And, and John and Steve, if I misrepresented it in any way, please say something because I, I'm trying to do a thing, the recollection of everything that happened. And certainly the attorney was there. It was some language he, he couldn't put in.
I mean, we were, we were right. That's his job. He just came back and said, this is not something you would sign.
Right. Yeah. He definitely would not sign the MOU. He, he recommended, we definitely did not find an MOU, but it would have to be some sort of formalized contract.
I still think you should have come back to the council. Like I said, we could have come up with the same thing, but the fact that it was unanimously made, made Miracle Field, you did not go back and say, listen, where we're at, you just said that, that they could have bent on some of the things. So.
But yeah, but when the big
But I mean, I, I'm just saying that I
But at the same time.
You know, I, you know, there's, there's a certain level of appreciation, I apologize.
You know, I, I, I think Sammy would agree and Katie would agree with it. That's how we felt. You know, you might think that, but that you, at least you could have done it even broke and like reached out to your caucus and be like, hey, this is happening. How do you feel?
Well, we weren't even provided the information. That's where I'm trying to clarify is we weren't even aware. We were asked to be invited to meeting for an update on negotiation and that's when you got the information and, and made the decision at that place. There wasn't any pre-caucus discussion. It was hardly available to talk about Miracle Field. There's something like 24 hour notice. And so John and I met with Dr. Willett, our county attorney, and Mike Wilkinson was on tertiary and yourself Lisa to talk to get an update. And that was probably Thursday morning. So ready for the holidays.
It was very, very early in the morning.
Yeah.
Um, just to try to see if I can have the attorney work on anything over the weekend, if there was anything that we would have been able to do, but we weren't able to get.
My question though, that I know that the, that the Miracle Field people, that they were trying to get a contract or trying to get a final agreement done by the end of May, correct?
That is correct.
And so this meeting or this incident occurred basically like the Friday before the Monday that they wanted this decision.
But we had a meeting Tuesday.
Right. Thursday, it was a Thursday morning. The hopes was if we could get the language to be agreed upon to go forward in a contract of some sort. The hopes was to get our attorney to work on it over the weekend. So we would have had something for the meeting on Tuesday.
Correct.
And that just was not possible to get what needed to go into that document.
That's just what I'm saying.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to. Okay. I understand. Great. Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments for the manager's report outside of the Miracle League or if there's anything else we don't work or I mean, yeah, so you're, you're good Lisa.
I hope I didn't cause any problems. I certainly had no intent to do anything like that. I, I have nothing else to offer and trying to clear up my office, but I can't seem to find the time. So, so we can get it ready for Brian to come in and open him.
Thank you. All right. That was us. I am 11, which is adoption of minutes. I'm issuing a motion to review the minutes and it's outlined in 11.1 and 11.2. So is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Well, this correspondence to council.
Sure. We had, oh wow, nine emails that came in between, um, May 25th and this evening. One was a ARPA funding request. One was regarding Miracle Field. Two were regarding the library. One was regarding the conceived on boards and commissions. One was about tennis courts. Two were about the town manager and one was thanking Lisa Handcock for all her awesome things.
Thank you. So it brings the item 13, which is the chairperson's report. I think it was mentioned previously, but it was a really great, uh, awareness break. It's glad to see everyone that was able to make it there and well run and obviously be a higher new town manager. I'm really looking forward to Brian not bored and again, want to iterate how much gratitude we have Lisa for your stewardship in this interim period and all work you've done and is outlined in our goals and so many other things that were done, kind of behind us and considered plenty of stories that you can't, can't share with, share with us.
But I will share them publicly.
And then we did have, I did have the chair hour last week. Um, we mentioned we went and 10, we did our first hybrid style meeting, uh, at town hall, looking to transition that to one of the library program rooms or little meeting spaces. So I can do my laptop and people come in and come in the chat. Um, so we're kind of making that shift. But the only thing I did get from the chairperson's report is afterward I stopped in near the library and someone complained about the center area of the library that there's, it only gets, gets hotter there compared to the rest of libraries and the HVAC unit. I don't know if that's something that you might be aware of that in the program room. They said sometimes it gets too cold in the winter and too hot in the summer. I think we had that issue during our joint meeting with the Board of Ed where it was.
We did have a situation in the library last, uh, winter that I had addressed, um, which it was getting very cold. But that got resolved. There was a problem with one of our units and it was on back order and we're trying to get it, get it in there. So I don't know if it's still occurring, but even
It's more like the heat now. I even went down, I went down. There was, it was like a five degree difference between going to like the adult section and being at the circulation desk and then some of the staff were commenting to me that it's like muggy there, like the heat just sits there. And the rest of the library usually is much more climate controlled. So there are just some current concerns I think about.
Which area was it?
It was right in front of the main entry area.
Main entry was extremely hot.
It was at least muggy. It was definitely the temperature jumps, you know, noticeably for patrons and, you know, some of them's there, folks in libraries.
It could be, it could be with all the excessive heat that we've had, the doors opening and closing, but I'll ask, um, our public works department facilities, uh,
That was guaranteed from the chairs, chair hour that I received. So. Moving on to item 14, just communication and positions and council members.
Just, um, a couple of things. Lisa, thank you for all your hard work.
You were already, I think, many times. And I think that
you're outstanding in the financial department, given the need of that. And I, I, um, hope you know how much I appreciate you and I'm sure everybody here, I think you and Brian will make a great team. Um, so I just wanted to start out with saying that. Thank you. And as much as I'm disappointed with the Miracle Field, it has brought a lot of awareness for ADA, what we need in that town. So if anything, I think we can take what we've learned and listen to our community and that we can do better. Um, so I want to also add that. And then lastly, I want maybe for Lisa, you know, Dave Garrett, have you reached out to us again, like a few weeks ago? Cause he wanted to request for our stuff too. Where are you at with him and public works and helping with cross farms? I guess what did that happen over there?
They, I know Pub Works is working on it. I don't have the update, but I know they were working together to get something resolved. So I could try to find that.
Curious on that because.
Yeah, I know they did need, they were working together. Um, our engineer went out and looked at things and they were trying to figure out what they could do in certain areas, but I'll speak to Scott. I'll get you, I'll get you all out of the emails.
Perfect. Thank you.
I think Sammy was, uh, if she was, I'll defer to the
No, that's okay. Yeah, my fault. Um, I would just, uh, echo everything that, uh, that Colin said. I think that this is, that, that you've done an outstanding job, um, that it's, it's, you've gotten us through some very, uh, very difficult, difficult times. You've done it, uh, with grace, with style and, uh, just been outstanding.
Thank you.
Um, that, uh, your leadership to the town has been, uh, truly appreciated. Um, your mentorship to the, uh, to the council here and moreover, your friendship, um, is something that has been outstanding. And I think that we are all better off for it. Uh, I, I truly appreciate everything that you've done. You put your heart and soul into everything that you've done here for the town. And, uh, I and, and it's, and for good reasons. I mean, not, not for the all.
No.
But, um, and I, um, I, um, I hope that you stay on with us as long as possible, um, because we definitely need you. And that, uh, that Brian, I was lucky to have you as a mentor as well and, uh, really, I just appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. He certainly will have a very good staff because thank God, you know, Beverly, John, Carl, Scott, everybody as a team really works well together. And if there's something I'm working on and I need help, I'll call. I'll say, you know, I need this, I need that. Can you get this for me? And they all are a great team to work together and that's the important thing, um, because you can't have a chief without any.
Yeah. Notice you didn't say it in the council, but I will.
I hope that wasn't, you know, derogatory or anything else, but.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna get all mushy like they all did. It's a good You know, I think you're awesome, you know, and you did a great job. I really appreciate it. And, um, you know, I appreciate you taking all of our phone home and, and our questions.
Yeah, the one at two o'clock in the morning that was just.
I'm sure that one wasn't.
I was like, no.
Listen, I text people and email people at random times because I don't sleep.
It wasn't me because you called me right after.
Two o'clock in the morning where, yeah, no, it was like that 1980s and 10 o'clock where your children. No, I, I, I am, I always have four different jobs, but, um, thank you for that. But I do have a, a petition, a request. Um, I know we got the D report for the, um, for the wells and I don't know if that's with the water commissioner or whatever, but I think the town council needs to be updated. We need to review that. Um, I will be reaching out also because I'm doing a meeting, uh, with citizens in the DEP and all that, but I think the town council really needs to go through that and understand the implications of it.
Absolutely. Uh, just to update you on that, I didn't really say publicly anything because Mike Wilkinson is managing that and he was going to arrange a, an executive session to discuss it in executive session. I know Steve was going to accuse himself in the process, but, um, so it is forthcoming. It's just, uh, I have to see where Mike is with putting that schedule.
Okay. Um, and then I just wanted to make sure for our next, um, ARPA subcommittee meeting that we do have on there, the request that came in about, um, the ADA accessibility for the fields. And I know we're kind of waiting on the engineer report for that. Um, and I just wanted to put out there again, I think it's on there. I hope it's on there, but I know, um, Wellington is doing this now too, but I still want to request looking at um, free recreation activities for the youth, like they're doing, uh, Wellington has 300 kids that they have signed up for their summer camp all free for the next three years, but using their ARPA money. Um, so I want to make sure that we have that on there for the sub.
It's definitely on there. There's a number of things on that list that need to be, I still need to add, I know I got emails from both of you. I haven't even had time to put it on the spreadsheet, but I do have them in my 200 saved emails. Well, I got rid of quite a few last week while, while I was away, but there's still some that need addressing. But anyway, that is on the list. There'll be, the other things on the list. And I think at the next ARPA subcommittee meeting, we should be looking at everything on that list and say, okay, this isn't going to happen. It gets moved.
Yep.
Under, you know, not going to happen. Um, and then start deciding what route you would like to go forward with recommending to the town council.
Good. That's, that's all I got. Thank you.
I wanted to say that in my opinion, the fact that we couldn't come to an agreement on Miracle Field was a complete failure by talent. I'm not interested in placing blame or rehashing the details or minutia. And I know and appreciate so many people put a lot of hard work into this, but we failed. This project was about finding a place for children with physical and cognitive challenges to play in a safe and supportive environment. And now we don't have that place in college. And all I, I can speak only for myself, but I'm horrified and embarrassed that our town could not make such a space available to these children. On a positive note, I would like to say, uh, I would like to call out Nicole Cowell and thank her for organizing the Pride in the Park event, which happened this weekend, uh, this past weekend. This was a really wonderful event. It was so great to see so many different talent residents there of different ages and backgrounds and such a supportive and welcoming environment. Um, so thanks Nicole for organizing and for all those who participated and a special thanks to the high school GSA who had a great bake sale with some very young guys.
Well, the humming bar looked great.
It was, they kept coming too. It was just, yeah, it was really delicious. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. Councilor Cock?
Uh, Lisa, thank you very much for everything.
You're welcome.
And as, as you helped me a lot. I got it. On the Miracle, Miracle Field issues, I don't want to add anything because I was very upset. And I don't want to pay a clean game or whatever it is, but it's like, they said, totally done and paid for. How it's out and, uh, I think it should be whatever work we really did. And I think I thought it came out of what it, I think is that I'm ashamed to, uh, do with it. Thank you.
Any other predictions, comments?
I'm sure even Lisa, we've spoken privately and I've spoken on that with you. Yeah. We've spoken privately and, and, uh, I, I've said publicly, how thankful I am for your stewardship over this time.
Thank you.
Uh, I wasn't crazy about the whole process to be honest with you. But I do appreciate everything that you've done.
It was.
So thank you for that. Um, and secondly, I guess, I guess I'll address the Miracle Field now. I'm not embarrassed. I'm not ashamed about how that all unfolded. We did our due diligence. We did our homework. We paid for a study. We did a lot. Sometimes things don't work out. Sometimes things don't work out. So we did everything we could. And that's pretty much what I have to say about that. We did our homework. And I knew a lot of people weren't going to be happy about this. Matter of fact, I didn't hear one person that did not want that field in this town. Everybody wanted the town, including me, including Steve, including Lisa, everybody. Sometimes things don't work out and it's unfortunate, but we did our best for the town. We did our best to take care of our town. So I'm not, I'm not ashamed. I'm not embarrassed. I'm happy I did what I did for the town because I think it was the right thing to do. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, my Sheri.
No, mine have got better than me.
No, I mean, I do appreciate, but I just seem to, but I, like I said,
I'm disappointed too.
I think that we just take that, what we've learned and just improve with ADA. We've been talking about it for the last two councils. That's why the project in there, you know, that's why we're spending the money this year at Cross Farms and that. So if we have another engineering study that's going, that's going to give us more information about making all the fields accessible. We just, everybody just approved $200,000 for Miracle Field. So make the other field ADA.
I think you'll definitely have a lot more opportunities to use that money for those initiatives and, and rather than it being one location, you have several others. Um, I mean, that's the positive thing that come out of this, um, not that, you know, but it would certainly help the rest of the community to have much more accessibility everywhere rather than just one location.
Thank you. That was probably, well, the same response. There's still, there's still a lot of anxiety, frustration, the way things have developed, but I do think there's endless opportunities for ADA accessibility in the community and creating so many of our spaces. ADA accessibility in the community and so many other spaces that need to be addressed. But not, I mean, it was very difficult. Really often see at this point, it's kind of in the past, but it was, it was a very difficult decision. I think I kind of was. Beyond the last holdout, I think I sat silently for a long time processing for, we kind of came to that decision. It was. Very painful. It was a difficult weekend. It was difficult two days and it's still difficult to reflect on and so as a, as a loss, but. I still, you know, and sometimes door closes and another one opens, but will bring a benefit to the town. So I really want to work forward on that. With the next town manager and continue with this council.
You gotta repeat. It isn't the.
Yeah.
I'd have to hit you with a stick though.
I appreciate.
This may.
So if there's no other communications and petitions on the item fifteen, which is public participation on any subject within their jurisdiction in town council. With a three minute limit, if you are in the public, you can personally state your name and address. Otherwise, if you are online, you can get star nine or raise hand function.
So there's a lot of talk about ADA stuff. Oh, twenty December, Jackie, one twenty seven, Anthony Road. So about ADA stuff. This building here, extremely confusing. So oftentimes you talk about disability as physical disability. When people are in wheelchairs or have a clear handicap, maybe there are individuals to have a mild cognitive impairment. Intellectual disability, have some mental health issues. And they take one step to the door, turn right around because they don't know where they're going. The signage is awful. There's not even on this side door here, I didn't even know what, if I was going in the right building. I was, I was frantically like texting people like, where am I supposed to go? And I'm a, you know, an adult. And there maybe even perhaps like having a sign on the door. I don't know if maybe a piece of paper, what tape is in the budget. But if you put it on the door that says like town council meeting here. Elevator here. Another thing regarding the. Substance abuse stuff. So marijuana can stay in the system, tested for thirty days. And say an individual smokes marijuana. A week and a half later, oh my God, this job at the town opens up. Great candidate. Perfect. Shows up. They have marijuana in their system. Say. A, a person with a substance use disorder had, you know, had a significant amount of alcohol the night before. In this urine test, would these alcohol metabolites be showing up? Because an alcohol metabolite, a metabolite test is usually you have to special order it. And that costs a lot of money. So theoretically, both weed and alcohol are legal. So I feel that they should be, if an alcohol, if someone gets tested for weed, they should also have these alcohol metabolite tests. Because that will show alcohol in the system, how many ever days, weed in the system, however many days. So I'm, I'm just, I feel that that might be, should stay consistent. Is this making sense? Okay, so because a person could have drank alcohol the night before, come to work with a, maybe not drunk. Come to work completely hungover. You know, the sound of sirens, they can't ride in their, their fire truck, but it might not be obvious that they're, because they're not under the impords. But there are other secondary effects that, you know, also weed might not have. Not saying I'm pro substances at all. In fact, I am not pro substances as I work in mental health and I see the terrible occurrences. However, there are bigger fish, fish to fry. Heroin, crack. So, yeah, that, that's what I have to say. I hope everybody heard me, even though not everyone is looking at me. Okay, thank you.
No, definitely. Thank you. I appreciate it. Sounds like you, exactly three minutes. Anyone else in the public?
Chief lights out. As a department head, twenty one Tom Green, I think I speak for most of the departments. We truly appreciate all the work that Lisa had done. Working with us and multitasking. And if anyone used to go back and forth with Lisa, it's her and I. And I tell you what, she, she did a great job being the town manager, but also managing the finances along with her staff. But she was. I'm usually one that's back and forth, hard to get along with. I love her. She's got heart. I can speak of my whole department and many of the department heads that the personal reach out and the personal thanks. Especially at a lot of our tragedies. We had Frank Falcone and a bunch of our people. She had come down right after a recent death and. Everybody that walked out said I was one of the first town managers, or somebody that came in and came around to the departments and stuff like that. So for my, for my department and all my staffing. We truly appreciate all the hard work and we'll still be here for you. So, thank you again. I appreciate the speech.
Thank you, John.
All right, seeing no other public participation, we will move to item sixteen, I'm getting a motion for adjournment at nineteen PM. Twenty eight in there a second. Like, like, comes through and hurry. All those in favor, think of by by saying aye.